Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Phil.
What is it?
Councilmember Lynn Leon.
Here.
Councilmember Bass.
Here.
Councilmember Comanche.
Here.
Councilwoman Thar.
Here.
And Mayor Green.
Here.
All right.
Okay, now we have the optional pledge of allegiance or a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. Under oath, the President of the United States of America, President Trump.
And I may have misspoke, I meant optional pledge of allegiance and moment of silence. I'd like us all to observe a moment of silence in honor and recognition of Marcia Martinek, who passed away last week. Marcia was hugely important and influential in our town, both through her leadership at the Herald Democrat and also, as we'll hear during the planning director's report, through her important work on our HPC. So please join me in a moment of silence for Marcia. Thank you very much. Moving on to the people of the agenda. Please don't anybody add anything. But if everyone is happy with the agenda, I would entertain a motion of approval.
Evidence to approve the agenda, no sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, all were in favor. Housekeeping matters. I have none. Now we'll move on to public comments about items not on the agenda. If you would come up to the podium, state your name and address, you have three minutes. Please Steve, take it away.
The hand is on the eight. My name is Steve Presse, I live at 131 East Third Street. I have an article from the Denver paper here that was on today. First, before I talk about this article, I vaguely remember one I read within the last two, maybe three months, that talked how financial incentive rewards, which we, I think we've made a budget allowance for that, actually fail horribly because they tend to push performance in the wrong direction. And this was a study I read, unless I had that totally backwards, which is always possible. This is a study short of work week led, so about half a minute, no, we're at almost a full minute now. I couldn't see the second, so I have two minutes left to talk about this. Apparently Golden, six months ago, had a pilot program to offer officers, offered their police officers forty hours of compensation for four eight-hour workdays. So instead of doing four tens, they were doing four eights. And I think this is something we should start to consider because it said to save the city, they have a larger city, $115,000 in overtime compensation, but it also addressed the burnout situation where officers were happier and less stressed. And I think that's very important. We tend to not address this issue very well by having them work four times and by not having fully staffed police forces, you know, adequate pay for it. Another article in the Denver paper, and I got sixty-five seconds. Thursday, February fifteenth, they were talking about Estes Park, how a federal judge has ruled that Estes Park's fee on short-term rental properties is constitutional and remain in place, rejecting the arguments of two cabin owners there. Now, these people claim that they lost $30,000 per year. And I'm thinking if that's the average, I don't know if this is their net profit or none, but let's say for the argument that that's the net profit on a short-term rental, $30,000 a year, I think we should charge twenty percent as a fee for our housing situation. That would bring us approximately $6,000. And since we have 171 of these units, that would be a million dollars of income per year, that we could take that million dollars, buy two properties for each year for our city employees. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other public comments for items not on the agenda, please Jane?
I'm Jane Harrelson, and I live at 172 Rafferty, which is out of the city, but I'm here on behalf of PB Swims to set the record straight and I do have a newspaper article reference about the community center that was purchased by the city last fall. And the reporter states that PB Swims expressed frustration over not being consulted by the city, and that's incorrect. And I did call the reporter and tell him that that was incorrect. PB Swims had no opinion on that whatsoever. And I didn't take it out on the reporter because that meeting was back in September. And I, as a representative of PB Swims, have been a walking expression of frustration for the last three years since the poll was closed. So we at PB Swims, we're putting our frustration behind us. We're moving forward. We're working toward a solution. And thank you, City Manager Simonson, Mayor Green, and the City Council members for being open to working with us and to meet with us. We really appreciate it. PB Swims is committed to renovating, operating, and maintaining an affordable public aquatic center. Our priorities are safety, sustainability, diversity, accessibility, as we provide education, health, recreation, and wellness for all.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any other public comments for items not on the agenda, please, Mr. Councilman?
Hello, everyone. Don't be counsel, 601 West Seventh Street, did not bring the newspaper with me to see that. Good to see you all, hope you're ready for next weekend, it is rapidly approaching. Thanks again for all the support, everybody with the city level that's involved. I regret to inform them, I'm gonna need some help, or I'm here to ask for some help. Lost a couple of big sponsors this year, and I'm seeing some financials going in the wrong direction, things like insurance and announcer and several costs that have doubled. Very thankful that we can still get insurance for an event like Ski Joring. But I'm here to ask a simple question for consideration, discussion with you folks at later this evening or another meeting. You had some dollars that were earmarked towards a reimbursement of a broadcast that were budgeted for this year for Ski Joring. If any of those funds are reasonably available, it can be passed on to Ski Joring, still we would be most thankful. And that's it. Thanks.
Mr. Counsel, are you referring to the $6,000 that we've granted in the past?
Yeah, yeah, and long, long story short, you know, that was, we did it that first year on McWeffy when it was COVID, no spectators, and then the following year, it seemed like it was a success. So I said, well, let's bring it to the avenues, they like that, they love this. And former Mayor Lobby was the one who had said to be done, but I think that because of, as we came out of those times, some, I thought he said it was sales tax revenue that we had earned in excess of what we had planned for, you should ask City Council, City at level, reimburse you for last year's broadcast. I said, all right, that's awesome. Said, and if I do, then I'll say, I'll guarantee we'll do it again, and that's kind of how the pay us back for last year, Mantra went. Feel appropriate asking for it because we're not doing a broadcast this year. Maybe that returns someday, I don't know. But the economics of it and the bandwidth it required just wasn't quite there, nor will we guaranteed that we were gonna have a spot on like Altitude or the Mountain TV Network, and that is what was cooking, right? Where you went kind of, hey, you can't buy that advertising, you had commercials about Leadville and Twin Lakes and Ski Cooper and CMC and the Mining Museum and HMI, that was what was neat. So if I couldn't do that, I didn't want to complicate things just for a live stream.
Would that amount offset your shortfall?
It would be great, you know, I can't say that we expect the entirety of it, or need, very genuinely honesty, or need the entire amount. Whatever you feel is reasonable will help us continue to make the event as awesome and safe and hopefully profitable for the businesses as well as the city of Leadville too. Yeah, so no holding breath, we're prepped here. It's still happening.
Discussion in somewhere?
Yeah, I guess that would be the question for council is that what we have been doing with requests for funding, which I think works a little better, is that if we don't have the resolution already drafted, we want to get some guidance from council, if that's something you want me to bring back at the next council meeting, I can do that for you.
Squeeze in a discussion. To review what we have on our meeting.
And it's not that urgent, sorry, not that urgent for this year's or prior to, it's more, I can't.
More cleaning up the mess on the other end.
Yeah, and I can't just look this far forward with an event like Ski Joring. I think it costs you certain amounts of different times.
So we could do an agenda item for the next meeting for potential contribution to Ski Joring, and I can draft a resolution without a dollar in it, in case you wanted to act on it.
That sounds great.
So we'll put it on as an action item, not as a discussion item.
Is that, what do you guys think?
Can I ask a good question? Any idea what the shortfall might be?
I don't know that it's even so much a shortfall, right, that we're gonna run out of money by next weekend. It's more, you have to have seed money in an account for things like insurance that hit before the event, the Calcutta proceeds, you know, we keep it as streamlined and as simple as we possibly can. So that's why I try to stress this is not a, we're at DEFCON one, we're in dire straits, more just trying to, to at least meet the fundraising goal that I had last year with some, some shortfalls in addition to several thousand dollars of bigger expenses.
Then to simplify the question, $6,000 was for the broadcast, what kind of cushion would make you comfortable for the next year?
Yeah, the six would make us comfortable, but we don't require the full six. I'll leave, I'll leave it to your discretion. I would say, I'm six, sir, I'm, I'm in big trouble. And I always try to conduct myself that way when it comes to this. This is an event put on by our community, for our community, you know, I've had a lot of tit-for-tat coverage, but what does it give? Well, it gives you a show of community support, and ideally, that support helps us put on an event that then brings you more customers and sales tax base, and everything helps, everything else will.
Thank you.
Yeah, so not, don't have to have the whole kid, whatever you think is reasonable. And I'm not aware of what other opportunities there might be that you could do with that money, or if you've already discussed something about it.
Let's, let's put it on next meeting.
Yeah, and thanks for guidance, too, Lori, I talked to her a few days ago, or we were texting back and forth. Thanks for guidance, Lori.
Yes, you're welcome.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
Okay.
First time in eight years of entity, so I'm a little embarrassed or bashful about it too.
We have a vested interest in keeping that.
Sort of, yeah, we're all fans.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? In-house? David, do you want to speak? Go ahead.
Thanks. Hi, guys, David Lee, I'm at 1202 North Green. I am a, been coming to Leadville summers for like twenty years, and been a full-time resident for two now. And I just wanted to introduce myself, I shoot for you. I represent a group that's trying to bring a hotel to town, a new, a new building, and truly difficult. I have seen other projects and what it takes in towns to do this and kind of made the leap after a whole lot of thinking about it. And it's, it's gonna be a lot of work to make it happen, but we're actually pretty close to getting that snowball effect that actually will potentially happen. But I'm meaning help, I need to just make sure that everybody knows what, what's going on and what, you know, what the pinch points are so that there's good communication and everybody is up for it. I've heard all these issues with developers in town, not, not a developer, I'm just, I'm just a guy, I'm actually a physician with it, that same business. And I, anyways, I want to say that, okay? Specifically say which project it is because I'm under contract with, do not discuss specifics of it in public, but obviously that will be issued person to person. But anyways, I don't know, you guys have any questions down order? Finish one of these.
Thank you. Any other public comments for items not on the agenda? Or anyone online? All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to the consent agenda. This one looks a little bit different than our usual just list of minutes because it includes the resolution identifying all of the holidays that we chose last meeting to expand the city's holiday offerings to. So this would just simply just be a, an eye vote, or just a, it wouldn't be a roll call vote. But has everyone had a chance to look over the minutes? We're all happy with them? Yeah. Okay, and if there is nothing to pull out of the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
Wouldn't it look super good, the consent agenda?
Thomas, let's.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, all were in favor. Let's move on to presentations and discussion, we're discussing the 2024 fee schedule. Hang on to your seats.
Do you want me to jump in?
Please, I'm just, I'm trying to get to this.
So as I mentioned in the stat before, for our newer council members, it's just a good fiscal practice to take a look at your fee schedule once a year and make any changes that are necessary. So the last couple of years, we have been doing that, and we have a master fee schedule. So in code, we don't actually put the dollar amounts, the dollar amounts are all included in this master fee schedule for all the different departments. So you can see there are just some formatting changes, I made each exhibit a separate page, try and make it a little easier to read. There are some, there are some changes that I think will maybe require some discussion, so I'll leave those for maybe the end and just ask at the preliminary outset, you know, the departments that have some changes include planning, animal shelter, and then there was a section that was inadvertently added to the fire department, and that was just a cut and paste error that we took out those. But I think what I'd like to do is say, other than the temporary use permits, are there any questions that I can answer for you on any other fees that were changing? So for example, animal shelter excavation or application fees for planning?
On the ones that you're specifically changing?
Yes. The revisions are redlined, hopefully, you've got that version this afternoon, it gets a little more helpful. I want to save the discussion regarding the temporary use permits, I know that's gonna be a larger discussion, but I thought I'd get the other changes out of the way first to see if there's any questions on any of those.
You have some of those, ones that haven't changed.
Okay. Okay, and that's actually a good discussion to have as well. All right, so let's, I think, I have the departments on standby, in case there are any questions about any of the other changes. But I think the, the thing that we did, that's probably the most significant change on this version, is we broke out and put under its own heading temporary use permits, and those are for us event permits. We have something else, a little specialty permit, and the event's a liquor permit, and I don't know why we'd cancel that, but anyway. But we, for the temporary use permits, what we found is that the more people that attend the event, the more internal staff time and city hall time it takes for us to work to coordinate the event. And so what we are trying to do is match the fee, which is what you need to do, fees can't make a profit, so fees are not factors, they are fees. And so if you see the stat before, you, you find that most of the time, fees don't necessarily always cover your costs, but the idea is you're trying to recoup the cost, that you're providing a special sector that isn't a benefit to the entire public. So, for example, you know, the Streets Department provides a benefit to everyone, but sometimes we don't have benefit for a smaller group, and we say, okay, you need to offset that benefit because it's, it's, it's the narrowly tailored group. So what we are proposing is the, for temporary use permits for events with fifty or attendees or less, it's fifty dollars, and then it goes up based upon the number of attendees. And one of the things that you need to do is have, not a mathematical equality of the fee to the time you're spending, but it should be in the ballpark. And so Ms. Thai and I sat down with Mr. Cummins, and we sat down and I said, okay, how much staff on, it's city hall, just city hall, spend on some of these bigger events. And what we found is we had at least two internal meetings with staff. This time would process the permit itself and tee those up for city council, so her time in doing that. Plus, we usually have one external meeting with the event promoter with just staff, and then we would present to city council with staff present, and then of course, there's all your time. So we did that, and it, for attendees of a thousand and one attendees or more, it was bare minimum about eight, over $800, closer to $1,200 for just one event. That's not including city council time. And we do compensate city council, but that's not including, that's just city hall time. That does not include the Streets Department, them, what I call their feet on the ground. So they're set up and kicked down for an event, and it does not include police time. So if you're just looking at a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars with, it's in the ballpark, probably on the low end of what every city hall staff time would be for a thousand attendees or more. And you all remember, one of the things that happened at the end of last year, and what I worked with, former editor Chi Chavez and our Streets Department manager on his event fatigue, we really, really, and one of the things I sat down and talked to them about is how we're gonna sort of manage some of that. And I think part of that is acknowledging how much staff time we spend on some of these events, and being more cognizant that, you know, $250 for an event that brings that many people to town is not, it's, it's, it's not coming close to covering city hall costs. So that's where we are, and, you know, some cities, if you look at them, they'll have tiers. We decided not to do tiers, we just made them the number of attendees, and you can see that the amount is roughly equivalent to the number of attendees. So with that, oh, one last thing, so we do have a practice of waiving fees for nonprofits. Ski Joring and group names are nonprofits, so there is the possibility of waiving those skis if they requested the fee to waive for their events. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, my first question is, I feel like this is a good stepping stone towards the right direction, is that kind of the intention behind this of like, we're definitely behind where we should be in terms of compensation for these types of events? This is a good way to kind of measure, is this a good direction we're heading in, and then maybe revise from there, or?
As far as fees, I think yes, I think what we're also gonna have to look at is compensation for, for volunteers for events that are a larger number. So if you remember, the first Pride Parade last year, the, the use permit had already been issued for, I think it was the marathon and hanging out for that weekend, and the Pride Parade Committee came to the city and said, we want to do this event, and they said, we're gonna restrict to them. We'd love to accommodate this, but we don't have the staff. They said, great, we'll provide the volunteers, and we said, fantastic. So we're gonna have to look at solutions like that, and we're looking at conflicting events and being spread of vendors. We, we cannot spend an entire summer mandating overtime for employees. We're gonna have to find either a way to contract, you know, contract employees out, or have the events contract their own, put their own staff for, for some of these, because, you know, we, when I come here, we have one and a half police officers, one and a half, and we cover the event with one and a half. That's just a lot to keep asking for these, and back to back. I think if we had one big event, I think we'd be okay, but events are a lot of our bread and butter for, for tourists. I mean, we need to acknowledge that, but we also need to, I know at the end of the summer, last summer, streets and police were, they, they, they were, they had a bad team.
How do you base, I mean, is this estimated attendees?
They put on, well, applicants will put on their temporary, how many attendees they expect. So they have to put down how many attendees, and they, if someone, I think honestly, someone's underestimating the number of attendees, I think I've mentioned, or with aerial photographs, you can, you can back up, I mean, intent, approximate number of attendees, it's not that hard to, if someone says we have 500 people there, like, it's, it's, it's quantifiable.
Other questions?
There are two pieces that I'd like to ask questions about, one that I have personal experience with, and one that just seems a lying fruit to me. The first is the alcohol beverage festival permit application. For instance, at the bookstore, if we wanna have a book signing, and we want a soda glass along, we might have twenty attendees, but we're lumped into that same license as a large festival. So our, there's no way for us to justify doing twelve book signings a year, paying a hundred dollars. Now, I know that there had been ways to work around that, but in future, it would be nice to be able to split that off into small local events that don't require any supervision and large citywide events.
Yeah, and to be honest, I, we tread a little more carefully on the marijuana and liquor because there's a, you know, as well, I, I.
They have to be posted, understood, sure.
And I think, I think that that makes sense with what we're doing with the events as well.
Absolutely, so I don't know, so scaling all of these different permits, that, that would address the issue. The second one is the fire inspection for short-term rentals.
Yes.
Is currently listed at forty dollars.
Yep.
I don't necessarily understand why we don't set that at around fifty dollars. It's still covering a very small amount of time, we're not overcharging for the permit fee. That just seemed like an exceptionally low fee for something that's actually a pretty invasive inspection.
Yeah, and so just for historical context, Chief Boyle, who's our, our fire marshal, he didn't raise that fee, we just did raise that last year, I think we raised it from thirty-five to forty, if I'm not, but.
And I just don't understand why we wouldn't raise it again and make it fifty dollars.
Okay, I don't want to put Chief Daniel on the spot, but, well.
It certainly costs, it takes Chief Boyle more than an hour to do an inspection, and he certainly makes more than forty dollars an hour.
Sure.
That's all I'm thinking, is it, it seems like an exceptionally low fee for a pretty invasive inspection.
Well, and so that's, I'll flag that, that I will get with Chief Boyle before we bring this back. So, so the way the process worked is, we had a resolution draft vote for this, and staff met and realized, there's probably more discussion that needs to be involved with, rather than just putting this under agenda as a resolution. So you can see this as a, for a discussion. So the, the idea, we, we bring this back, you know, ideally, at the next meeting or at the following meeting as a, as a resolution, so, for your consideration. So I will get with Chief Boyle between now and then and see what he, how much time he's betting on it, and.
It just seemed like an exceptionally low fee for the service provider.
Yeah, and all we need to do in these cases is calculate his time, run a run calculation of what his hourly rate is, and if it's in the ballpark, like I said, it doesn't have to be mathematically exact.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear a little bit from the animal shelter about their fee modifications.
Do you mind coming up, it's just hard to hear people in there in the back of the room, that you're moving in.
Which ones in particular?
Which ones in particular?
Um. I'm wondering about, I mean, I think I understand the no charge, changing it to no charge if you pick up your animal the first day and that way they're not just being great.
Yes, they're not eating out, you have repeat offenders who say, well, it's cheaper than if I took them to dog daycare.
Yeah.
So that encourages them to come pick them up. As well as then if people are following the law and getting their pet license, then they kind of have that benefit of, you know, you get that added fee waived as well.
And I'm also wondering, thank you, about the, uh, what I think is, I'm reading here is a is a is a range of fees. Like a spay neuter deposit, is that a hundred to two hundred dollars?
Correct, so for females, we charge two hundred dollars, for males, it's a hundred.
And that's a pretty wide range on adult dog adoption fees, based on weight?
No, um, typically it's gonna be based on, like, if we have older dogs, dogs that are, like, less desirable, so they have medical or behavior concerns. We know that they're gonna be investing money in vets or trainers, so if we can get that dog into a home, that's gonna be invested for fifty dollars versus three hundred dollars.
That makes a lot of sense.
Or people fighting over pup puppies, so.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other questions for Caitlin?
Thank you.
All right, other questions in general?
Yeah, I I have questions regarding the short-term rental license fee. Um, I believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, um, that we don't currently check to see if the license is being actively used, correct?
We are, uh, with a lot of things, a compliance-based system, so
Yeah.
we are not affirmatively going and doing that, we would seek it, okay, we would investigate it.
Right, and that's uh, basically from my perspective, if someone applies for a license and sits on it and doesn't use it. Um, at some point, I imagine we would wanna tackle that, right? I then would say, at some point, maybe we should also revisit that fee for that administrative lift. Um, if we do implement something like that, which I would love to see, um, a simplement so people aren't just sitting on short-term rental licenses. There is a Or there is?
Yes.
And do we revise that in any way or?
There's a fourteen-day minimum, but we're not currently, we don't have the capacity currently to verify that.
Okay.
Correct.
And would including a fee so that we could add capacity to verify that? I mean, I feel like that might be a smart choice for us to do um, just period so that we're able to actually uh, make sure that even if it's not fully funded by the fee, um, at the very least, we're able to make sure that the people who do have licenses are actually using them and not just sitting on them for whatever reason.
And would you specifically mean the ones that are capped because of the limit on them?
Yeah, the the, I think plus two.
Yeah.
So I guess the the question then is some of these suggestions, are these suggestions that, I I mean, I think I know I'm checking with Chief Boyle on this one in particular, but the others, are these suggestions for this year or suggestions you'd like to see in future years that?
I understand that that's a big ask administratively and I would hate to say, hey, implement this, please, right away. So I am totally understanding if if the pushback is, this is just a really hard system to implement right away. And we might have to think of for it for next year. Um, the sooner the better, of course, but if it's a really big change administratively and you think it's gonna be way too big of a lift, then I totally understand.
I don't know, so we had a good discussion today uh, with Elsa Tharke about some compliance. And I'd like to give a rundown on, um, we use lodging reps as a platform for short-term rentals and I don't know if that's something they could just quickly run a report on.
Hmm.
Uh, so if it is
That is what they quantify, so it should be reported, it can be run.
When we looked
And we are currently using that system.
When we looked through their system, it seemed like they're uh, just just like the situation with finance and Cassell that there may be features within lodging reps that we're not currently using that we could um
Yeah, so I think one of our Absolutely, one of our action items that came out of it was to, for us to learn about the additional features that we may not be able to utilizing. So that's, so I guess that media, I'll get back to you on that question, is it, would it justify an additional fee? If it's really as quick as us requesting a report or being able to run a report on our own within a couple of seconds? Probably not, but if it takes staff on, sure.
Well, I imagine it would still take staff time, but for example, there is a non-compliance um, or
Right.
Yeah, so uh, for that.
Okay.
And my, one for the fire uh, inspection fee I'd like to see this year. The other one is something that could be done on a grading scale with the three different licenses and could be addressed next year.
Other discussion points on the fee schedule?
You open or not?
Uh, it 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 can be.
So I was surprised that I could follow this.
Tamara, if you'd like to come up and and engage in the discussion, please, please, I'll ask you to to limit your comments to three minutes, so for meeting matter.
Tamara, generally, Ludville Race Series, our race director. I think the two things I would offer is, one is our budgets have been set since October. We've been paying two fifty a year and that's what our budget is set against since October of last year, so if we're considering a raise, I'm certainly Ludville side, willing and see the potential needs of things for that, but it's a challenge to look at that words of a jump. Where our budgets have been set, number two, from my knowledge and basis statewide, those permits, city permits range from about one fifty to five hundred dollars. So this would be a significant difference to other local entities and I would come back prepared to document that at my next round, but just offering that knowing that these these events were set and brought into place to drive revenue, to drive economic vitality. And how do we find the balance between those two things? So those are like my two things, our budgets are set, so if we make a big jump, that's a big issue on on the end of the event promoters. Um, and second, looking at what the state's actually doing and what are the standards and the data across other cities? And looking at that and how we can curve that, thanks.
Thank you. Sure, Steve.
Right, so when we talk about the these events uh, bringing income to the city and businesses in general terms and I, from my perspective, I think this is incredibly misleading. The events, when when I was at the bookstore, we lost money on almost every event. Uh, if a weekend we had an event, we would lose money. If there was no event, especially during something, during, uh, we made money when there was no events. So um these events primarily are for benefits of lodging. And um, from my perspective, from what I understand, the their real winners in the events is the lodging industry. And it maxes out their capability and capacities and, you know, is great for them to change. But the other small businesses don't seem to do as well. Now, I could be wrong, uh, but you know, basing on what I saw in the bookstore, we lost money on weekends that we had these events. So, again, if the fee schedule is adjusted it should uh, be adjusted that taxes the lodging industry and also the realtor industry who makes money off these, you know, transactions more than it should be taxing the individual, the limited businesses, but thank you kindly.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to participate in the discussion?
Is there any thought given to um, and this sounds complicated even as I'm about to say it, but any thought to requiring a um someone who's hosting an event to provide their own security, for example, or provide their own volunteers and then modify the permit price accordingly?
Uh, well, that's what we're saying is this doesn't, the the fees that we're asking to increase to wouldn't, wouldn't even cover
Wouldn't, I know, I get that.
So um, we, so we have asked, like I said, Pride Parade to provide provide their own volunteers because we just didn't have the ability. I think it's gonna have to happen, that we ask some of the event promoters to provide their own security or their own you know, set up, helping with the setup and take down or, um, so uh, you know, we need blocking the side traffic, having volunteers to help do that.
I guess if we're gonna do that, I think we need to encourage the events and maybe these fees are too high in that case.
So if you, if you run, uh, so the, let's just take the mountain bike. Uh, I'd say maybe six, one thousand six hundred entrance for that race at four hundred and seventy-five dollars registration. That's eight hundred and seven thousand five hundred dollars is just mountain bike.
Okay.
And so we're saying we're increasing from two hundred fifty dollars to a thousand dollars. You you tell me that they can't afford two hundred fifty dollars, I I don't think that's accurate. I mean, I understand the that that the budgets have been set. What we're trying to do is get this in place so they can plan for a budget, but also that we don't have the TUP applications for this year yet. Now, I think if the TUP application was before us right now, that's not fair to race, but we're, you know, ideally, we wanna get these in place so that they can be part of the budget. But I just do not think from two hundred fifty to a thousand, if somebody's won't give them the amount of time we have to include that.
I think from my perspective, I I would agree with Ole, but also I have the uh, perspective of for a long time, our community has been saying the same, um, regardless if it's true or not, um a large portion of the community, they're convinced that a lot of these bigger events are much more of a drain to us than they are an addition to our community. Um, and it feels like it's a drain of resources rather than an addition. So if we can, at the very least, on a city perspective, uh, implement a um you know, what I would also consider a modest um, increase to these really, really big events uh, for the amount of revenue they'd be making. It feels like we could justify having and continuing that with, look, at the very least, administratively, we're covering a lot of the work that we put in um, to be able to do that, and that's what these numbers are based off of, they're based off of uh, the administrative time that goes into putting these events on from the city's perspective, which I value more than uh, what it would take for other communities. So I I would fully agree that this makes a lot of sense to have this way and continue to approach it from this perspective um, as staff have recommended.
May I ask, which of our events would likely be in the one thousand and one attendees or more category?
Uh, ski drawing, boom days, uh, the definitely the mountain bike, absolutely TUP for the
And the mountain bike hundred, you mean?
Correct.
Okay.
Be any streetwear event, would be more than a thousand attendees.
Which one? Is that?
Any, any, any streetwear event, whether it be one of the larger
Yeah, it happens basically the three and then possibly the race, the running race, the one hundred race, it's come close to that, but the bike. The bike definitely does, and then ski drawing and boom days.
So as far as existing events or or recent history, recently his, events that have recently happened? Only four would would go into that thousand dollar category, two of which are nonprofits.
Right.
So we'd currently be talking about the run and the bike hundreds and then any future events at that
Right, and the run is only eight hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, the run is, the run may fall into, and the other lifetime events may fall into this. The only one I would say might be pushing that is the Fourth of July parade. And and that's where we heard, oh, it seems like owners want more people, but I I don't know that they're at at a thousand and one. They might get there.
Okay, so for those other events that are between five hundred and one and a thousand, they've gone up from two fifty to five hundred. Whereas um, the thousand-plus events have gone up from two fifty to one thousand, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's proportional to how much time we have to spend. We don't have to spend as much time on the, you know, the, I'm trying to remember the exact numbers. We do not spend as much time on that other lifetime event only do, but we have, I guess, at least the bigger of the two internal meetings and meetings with also the promoters to make sure that we've got everybody on the same page. And usually those are once in advance and then usually the week before, to make sure everybody's got the same playbook.
Okay, thank you.
And I would say, you know, there's a lot of discussion about these events after they happen and, you know, I wanna correct some misinformation that's out there, the city does see a bump in sales tax revenue during those months. We do, it's, you can pull up the numbers and I I fully support these events because they are important to our economy. I think the one thing, the takeaway is we just have to manage them. And we have to make sure that if there is particular friction or stress or fatigue about certain things and, you know, Tamara's been fantastic on this as far as, you know, there's a request for additional court filings or, you know, there's been certain friction about certain things. Uh, I think it's just going forward, we need to be cognizant of how we manage it, so we lessen friction. Some people want the races to go away, I'll just tell you, I don't think that's a good idea. It's it's it is important for the economy of this town, so we just have to make sure we're, we're reducing the friction as much as possible.
Other comments?
Mary, could I say one more thing?
Yes, please.
Um, just, oh, do you mind coming up? It's just my record in the back room. Sure, um, and two other things I'll add is, we probably put in excess of thirty K back into our thirty to forty K throughout the summer into our local organizations who are able to volunteer. We do staff with local security, we hire locally, so that is coming from sheriff's office, going to the dollars, going back in. Our late, our last east, our last economic driver study showed twenty-one million in direct and indirect spend in those three months. So something that we wanna look at closer, we're doing another study ourselves, I'm doing one through EDC as well to look at the general. And then, so just that seven hundred K number, I understand that, that's an easy number to target. But to put on the event is much, is much more expensive than it appears, so I just wanna name those things, but those are not blanket things that we can live and breathe by. But what is our goal here? What are we trying to do in this timeframe when we bring these events into this city and how are we working together to the county and the city? And on those, so, thank you.
Okay. Other comments?
I I think I've supported the idea of these permit fee increases, are we also considering hiring contractors? Cause I remember how overworked everyone felt last summer uh, in terms of managing traffic and managing the policing. So if an event host does not choose to provide their own security, will would we contract that out and charge against, charge that to the host, how's that gonna work this summer?
Yes, they, exactly, so it, uh, Ms. Ty, you try, we we do have on the temporary use permit application a line where we can charge back for any services that we, you know, for police or streets that we need. But yeah, I think that's something we're gonna have to look into going forward because it doesn't make any sense for us to staff our police departments and our streets departments year-round for a couple of large events, right? So the other issue too is that we're saying, we're gonna, we're the the police departments, you know, the taxpayers paid for all that coverage for last year for those events and we're gonna have to figure out, if we don't, if we can't do it, we might just put it back on the vents to say, like we did on the pride parade, we said, we can't do it. If you want us to approve this application, you need to come up with eighteen volunteers. Otherwise, we can't hold it up that we can't put, we can't approve the permit.
But at the same, but at the same time, as I made, the fee itself is for administrative time. So one thing that we weren't realizing is, we So one thing that we weren't realizing is we're not getting time for the street department. If they're having to do overtime on a Saturday or an event is on a Saturday, we're not charging back for the street department or the police department time. And that's something we need to do, but that is truly separate from the administrative costs and the time it takes, office wise and meeting wise before the actual event and before you're putting the street department out or the police department out there. So that's where we need to charge back, and if an event provides their own security or their own, then we don't charge that back. But we still went through that administrative time and meetings set up to make sure that we had, you know, what we needed. And were able to close the streets when they needed to be closed. And so, to me, in my head, they're just two completely different things, administrative and then I didn't put it feet on the ground for the, street and the police department.
Okay, thank you. Good explanation, yeah. Other questions, comments, insights? That's a good one, thank you. Let's move on to department reports. So we're just gonna, we're, we're lowering in the hot seat.
I, I had, we have lots of good department reports from all the departments, so I just have a few updates. Uh, let's see, so one question that came up in the, uh, meeting, I think last time, was about the J K Milling operations and would we be a referral agency or what, how would we be involved in that? And so, um, planning director and I talked about this and he has spoken to the county about it. It would be a conditional use permit and that would be a referral to the city for comment. So, uh, that, just so you know, we would have the opportunity to comment on that. Uh, I also received a request from Betty Benson to have a local community group come to the city council and present. And we'll see if that can happen the next meeting. Uh, speaking of your next meeting, um, drink a cup of coffee before you come to that one. Uh, right now, it is, uh, looks very long. Just give you a heads up that, uh, we have several presentations and, uh, including, I hope, a presentation, uh, from P V Swims. You've, um, got some potential, uh, ordinance, I mean, uh, some potential resolutions, including maybe the fee schedule. And, uh, a resolution for ski drawing in addition to an ordinance. Okay, and right now, we have it on the schedule for the first reading of three ordinance establishing the S T R license numerical limit. That you've all been on the edge of your seats before. So, uh, that, I would like to give you a preview of what's coming, those are some of the bigger items, there's smaller items on the agenda, but yeah, drink a big latte before you come. And, uh, the other update, very exciting update, uh, wanted to announce, Ms. Beal would allow me to announce this. Uh, she is now certified, a certified professional by the Society for Human Resources Management. That's a really big deal, so, uh, and she studied for three months for this three hour test. Uh, that she just passed, and so we're happy to have her as a certified, it's called SHR, Society for Human Resources Management. But congratulations. Uh, and that's it. Wow, I know, I, I'm gonna let the other departments take the time.
Yes.
Uh, do you know what the community group wants to present on?
I know they want to present their perspective on the operations that, uh, the J K Milling is gonna be doing. Out at what used to be the, I don't know if I can get on this, this mountain area.
Okay, other questions for city administrator? Okay, let's move on to streets and community now.
This is gonna be short, uh, we've just been working on rebuilding snow, uh, as the snow falls, we've been having clear roads again. Uh, we've done our work on Harrison Avenue and one hundred blocks, seeing all of our snow storage areas. Which are all clearly marked, and they're only a half blocks. On those, they're easy to say, they keep the noses clear, but again, the time is snow, we help them, they're all over again. Uh, we've been working out, branching out into the one hundred and two hundred blocks, uh, more recently. Uh, this last week, we started doing further up the streets, uh, we've gone to the other streets we've done. Uh, we've cleaned out most of the left street down, the left street down as far as we go. They did, after the night screen, today they just started working on West Eight, because we're trying to balance the street east and west. So, you know, we can get to everybody's piles, uh, their piles everywhere, uh, we're having issues with, uh, contractors and people with snow piles making their own piles wherever they build or they create and put a pile. So we've been having to clean those up at the same time as well as, uh, what we make, and our piles are big enough. And we keep making them bigger with gratitude than the others. Uh, today alone, they must have done, I think the last count, they had forty-seven truckloads. Just off of Bay Street and it's not complete yet. Uh, we've been averaging anywhere from the forty-seven to, I think we were hitting as high as a hundred and five loads a day. Like all my full trucks running, uh, all up to our snow dump. Luckily, we're within city limits of our snow, so it's a rather short turnaround, but great time consuming to do all of this. We're trying to stay on top of things, I get, you know, the phone calls and messages from people, and I try and get to those calls and as quick as we can. And when we're in the area, we will do what we can and, you know, clear it up. A lot of the problem is people will not move their vehicles and some will stay there for weeks at a time. I've been working more and more with, uh, the police department and getting them to actually tag them. We've had several vehicles towed. Um, it's starting to, I think people are starting to understand we're serious, you know, they want the streets cleaned back into their cars as well. Um, that's the only way we can get them, because our machines are too big to just pick and choose what we can reach. We need, we need room, uh, so that's starting to come around, we're starting to get more, more cooperation with people on that. Uh, this next week, we're gonna start getting ready for ski drawing. Uh, we're gonna start doing ice breaking on West Eight. I'll start on the side, let's, I can tell, West Eight down to Pine, all the way across Pine, Third Street. And then up to East Four. And I have to talk to city or the road bridge department and see if they're gonna help with, uh, popular shit like it historically they've been doing, and we're gonna get that cleared. Because that is our truck route around inside tomorrow, cold down the road for an entire weekend. Uh, we'll have to put the truck route out, safe way, round through Mount Massive and down through the normal traffic to get it around town. But, uh, those are long days, we have to set up a sign, we have to start days before, and we're still moving this snow too. Uh, in the process right now, I'm too operating short. I do have a prospect right now that we're in the middle of doing some interviews with. Yeah, so I may get a little bit of help here soon, um, this person does have some background and I believe will. We'll see, it's one of those, we'll, we'll see if she can do it today.
Do they know, we're, that we're expanding the holidays? Do they know that we're expanding the city holidays?
I told my guys about it and now that it's been official, tomorrow I will give them an actual copy and tell them. I'm gonna be there, so they'll be there, we'll get happy tomorrow. Uh, and we're just gonna continue doing this, uh, we've got a lot of snow all around town and a lot of requests for, with different things. And we try and do what we can.
Questions?
It sounds like the streets department is still understaffed and has been for quite a while. In the last couple of city council meetings, we've talked about potential finding contractors support to help out the street department. Have we made any progress with them?
Well, yes, uh, I, I think, Tony, do you wanna get, or, yeah, do you wanna give an update on that?
Uh, I could talk to some of the contractors down here and get some prices from them. Uh, the minimum price that, uh, I believe was a hundred and ten an hour for just the trucking, with this truck. Uh, we're looking at, uh, equipment such as blowers and stuff to help us with loading and stuff like this. I believe the minimum was two thirty to two fifty an hour. So, we've got a budget, I believe, like, last saw was fifteen hundred dollars, so when we burn through that, we'll, we'll, we have to, we need that. I'm trying not to go that route, I ask you absolutely, we have to, I mean, my guys can get it, they know what they're doing. They've been working their butt off, and, you know, we're just trying to stay on top of things, but.
Great job, absolutely no question, it's just difficult in here under scale and, and with these three day storm cycles, it's not easy.
And that's the, the problem is when we get that four inches or more, like in our policy. It's not a one night plow, it's a two night plow, sure, because the first night we have to go out and clear Harrison, then we have to clear one hundred block. Then we clear all the streets, all the arterial, then we get to all the streets all the way around and alleys at the same time. The next night, we have to come in just to clean Harrison Avenue, to get all the snow pushed off of there. Just get Harrison Avenue to clean the one hundred blocks and what you can get off of our snow storage stuff. So that, we get a start, it's a two day operation alone. So that puts everything else on hold until we get back to it.
I know that you've got a maximum hours per week that you're. Have we, have we given any thought to, uh, trying to manage how private contractors are dealing with snow? Last, well, a week or two ago, we were talking about how you just get these little mini Matterhorns at every corner. You can't see around when you're driving, it's all around the town.
And those are the ones that guys are right now, excuse me, uh, are cleaning up like down Gate Street, everything from the corners, intersection there, you know, being pushed to the center. And then that's where they load it to the trucks and take them up there. But that extra time to move those is what is making it last even longer. Uh, I think we've, I talked to Lori about this, uh, was brought to my attention that I believe Vale has a contractor policy that they have to get a permit. And it's a very minimal charge, but we would then know who is out there pushing snow and what they're doing. And stuff, and that could almost keep track of it.
Or just require them to push their snow mass to the corner, they can.
Exactly. You'll be able to make conditions on that as well.
I, I was wondering the same thing, because I saw a lot of this just this last weekend. So what would, what would be a better option, or what would you prefer those contractors do with their snow? Cause they're not gonna be long at the town, they generally, they're contracted, bringing the dozen drivers through, stuff like that upon.
They're also contracted like that, um, they usually have a place to push the snow to on private driveways and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
It's the, I should say, I'm one of those, but you have to be responsible when you purchase snow. And so you have to be careful not to put them on the corner, not put them on somebody else's property, you know, you can only push it to areas that are not gonna cause a problem. But right now, we're getting snowmowers throwing their snow into the streets. Uh, we get people pushing the snow and they're not cleaning up, they're messes, we get a lot of windrows. Uh, then we get the complaints about ripples. And so, and it's very frustrating to us, to my guys and me. Uh, we will clean up a night, we'll be done eight, nine o'clock in the morning, we'll go home, get some sleep, we'll come back out that next night. The roads are, it hasn't been snowing still, the roads are roughly, it's just because of all day long, a little bit of snow. Driving over it and it just passes it, and then it's really hard for a plow to go over it, even with our large loaders, to go over it and, smooth it out, when we're already out doing none of that. So we can't go do it twice.
And I, I was gonna say, I remember Mayor Lobby said that they had a meeting with all the contractors and explained the rules. And then they still had issues, so I don't, they, you know, Ms. Rendina and I talked about it, obviously, it's very easy when you see somebody doing it. But if there's just a pile, if we don't actually see the person doing it, we can only assume who it might have been. And have these meetings again, but it sounds like the meetings that happened several years ago were ineffectual. For whoever it was that wasn't following the rules, uh, but I think, you know, we, we're, we have the advantage of the newsletter. We can try and push out, we're trying to push out lots of, uh, snow education in, because I, I, I don't know if it's people don't know or they just don't care. But I, I, I don't, other than us seeing somebody doing it and telling them they're not allowed to. So the C S O or community service officers have been telling people that they can't throw their snow in the middle of the street. And have, have the copy of the ordinance on them, so Sergeant Ortega made copies of the ordinance that they can carry with them. To show people who are throwing the snow in the street that you, um, you can't do that.
So what about Tony's idea of requiring permits for these, uh, independent or private contractors?
Yeah, again, I think that's probably not a bad idea, I think the question then is, we still need to figure out who, which of those people that were permitted might have been making the piles. They should have a business license.
Yeah.
There's three of them so far that I know that actually have a business.
See, I believe they're required, that when they're, we move snow from a business, they're responsible for moving that snow to the snow dump, not to the city. But, and so, if we can find out who's gonna do it now, and I think we've got a couple suspects right now. But, um, if we can figure that out, and if they want to pay us to do it, that would be part of the fee then. Or if they want to trade time with us and say, we did it this time, well, the year term we do all that pile next. You know, something like that, they'll trade us out with a little bit of time and effort on that, I'd be open to doing that as well. But, permit will definitely give us an idea of who's doing what and where.
I, I think there's plenty of people out there with flowers on their trucks too.
Yeah.
Power on our corner, he's homegrown drunk, he's probably a little drunk, so.
It's okay, we're, we're gonna share, we're on that.
Um, one last, um, comment rather, no question, uh, that I have is, um, long term, I think it would be beneficial for the whole throwing snow in the middle of the street to revisit where city, uh, dump sites are on each street, I don't know, uh, long, long term, like years from now, as we planned it out. Uh, I know we have something in place that we're, we have more comprehensive planning, but I would like to see maybe, that could be a potential solution to where people are more incentivized to dump it into some middle pile rather than, into the streets that then cause a lot of the issues. I know especially, um, well towards that, like the seven hundred blocks and the eight hundred blocks, that is much more common than, than the one hundred blocks.
Those, those are the ones that our piles are scattered out and the guys that have to be able to pull them together.
Yeah.
Also, it's pretty obvious where we're putting our snow piles.
Yeah.
Stuff, but people just don't wanna go that far, so they don't push it. So, cause they've got big equipment, they can push this thing all the way down the street. Well, yeah, we could, but we shouldn't have. So, but no, I, I know what you mean, our snow storage is in our, our clearly marking town. Uh, we're gonna set up something in farther up in the streets and stuff like that, um, that's something we could look at. Um, I need to find out whether, do the street parking, even, and does it have snow storage signs that were in the past? Cause if they are.
No, because it's always been closed from two A one to six A one, so there's no message which they. Good point.
Tony, thank you so much to you and the crew, you know, literally the town would not run without y'all, so appreciate it and know how hard you work. Um, could you say more about the cars? And you mentioned, you know, people move their cars, that would help a lot. What are the power guidelines and what does the process look like for towing or if people aren't following those guidelines?
Well, what we file, we'll make our, 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 and stuff like that. Usually the next day, most people are already here someplace, so they have to clear the driveway to come out and they leave. And when we come in the next day or two, it depends on how much snow we get in and stuff, we'll come back and we'll try and clean up as much as we can. And make the piles. If they haven't moved their vehicle in seventy-two hours, then it's subject to being tagged and then it can be towed.
Okay.
If it's not, uh, within, within a certain time. Uh, a lot of times too, it also depends on what area we're actually working in. Uh, if I, like, tomorrow, I know we're gonna be working on the bottom part of Eight Street and I wanna jump up to. I know we're gonna be working on the bottom part of Eight Street and I want to jump up to East Side of Seven Street and walk our way back up like that little triangle. That one set out. So. When I get done here, I'm gonna make a drive that way and then that way. At first in the morning, I'll have probably one of the C S Os go try and contact vehicles that tonight appeared to be a problem for us. I'll double check in the morning again, and some of them may be gone by then. You know, everybody's going to work, so that will help out quite a bit. Um, when they're moved. Right where we can try and get it there. It's it's the ones that some people just. Park and forget about till three ten.
Do you sign the streets ahead of time, telling people?
Ice breaking and stuff like that. Then we definitely do because for them, they gotta be curb prepared.
Yeah.
And stuff. But when we're trying to do the snow, uh, removal, piles are already established and now we're trying to do this, clear those up as much as we can. And if it looks like it's gonna be an issue or we need to come back and break ass, then we'll send a date. Come back and sign it the day before so we can go in and clean it in the next.
Thank you.
Is so for you to tag the car, you have to get a C S O to come and tag the car?
That streets department can't do that on their own. No, that's purely law enforcement. All I can do is call them and say, hey, there's a white car on the four hundred block. These four. In our way, can you do something about it? And what usually they try and do, they try and contact the owner, see if they can get them or if they can get them, we'll with them. You know, if he's good. If they can't contact him, we'll even the next day, put them to tag it. Those kids don't have any two options. Which means then we have to go to a different street. If we want to get something done on that street.
Is it is it legal that it has to be done through the police department to put a sticker on the cars? Is that something that could be consolidated to the streets department to allow that? The the streets department is gonna know problem cars. And no things that haven't moved in a certain amount of time. Does it have to take that extra step or is it something that can be done by the streets department?
Uh. The long answer to your question is that the staffing is provided right now through the community service officers in the police department. Legally, does the uh do as this community service officer have to do it? I'd have to check on that, but it's possible. But the bandwidth right now is that, you know, Ms. Redina's crew doesn't have the time to do the phone calls to try and track people down. And to try and knock on the doors to get the cars moved. So it's right now it works better for them to go. Whatever really whatever cars they need to have dealt with. They call the community service officers, do all that legwork. Because that's that's their job, part of their job description.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering about the placement of stickers, not trying to track down the.
Yeah. Yeah. So they'll they they can uh access access the databases to find out the registered owner of the vehicle. And if there's any contact information, they can. We're contact the registered owner. Um, that way.
Sure.
Yeah.
Good question. All right.
We would run out of tags if you'd like to let some of us. It's exactly what I was.
She may run out of tags on the seventh floor. Um. Okay, other comments or questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Yeah, good night.
Police Department.
Uh, in addition to the. Uh, update in your packet, um. Uh, Acting Chief Brier is uh doing an investigation tonight. So he told me he was not going to be able to attend the meeting. But he did provide me a couple of things to update on. Uh. Hold on a second here. Okay, uh, let's see. He is working on uh applying for twenty twenty four post training grant. He says he usually receives five to eight thousand dollars through this grant application. Uh, let's see, he is working with the sheriff's office. To cover the ski drawing event uh staffing. Uh, with the police department will have twenty four seven coverage that weekend. And I know he had a um the Herald called him, I think on Thursday or Friday for an interview about, you know, upcoming. And he said, yes, it's true that we are a bit lean in the uh police department. He said, but we have been leaner. As I mentioned, the one and a half police officers when I started, he said, we're we're fine. Uh. Uh, uh, Acting Chief Brier is really the person who's been putting together the ops plan for ski drawing the past few years. And um consulting with the chief at the time, so we should be good to go on that. Um. I am gonna knock on this fake wood table. He said he just received an application for a police officer. And it looks good that the applicant is also already post certified. So I didn't jinx anything, but that's the update.
Did you know about the new holiday schedule?
We're 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 knocking on all the bells and whistles. We uh, yes, the new holiday schedule. What was the other thing we were talking about? Or the retention? You know, I mean, we're we're looking, we're hanging all kinds of shiny things on the tree.
Do you know what the post training grant would cover?
Uh, yes, so I think so in order for uh, it's not just.
Also.
What's that? I just wondered if that was Tony's truck.
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Elvis has left the building. So. Uh, it it can cover Academy, uh, it I but it also, you know, all of our officers have to maintain their post certifications. And there's training, um, minimum training requirements for that. So even if we didn't spend it on Academy, we can spend it on the continuing training for the officers. And you know, uh, Action Chief Brier has always been good. That's one of the things he's been doing as an administrative sergeant for a long time is hunting down uh grant money.
Okay. Questions or? Acting Chief. Lori for acting chief.
We don't have the person that I need to ask this question of, but it seems like an absolute glaring hole that we have zero issued parking tickets for the month. I spent a tremendous amount of time on Harrison Avenue and it's atrocious, the amount of illegal parking we have on the street, blocking. Our intersections, blocking our fiber hydrants, particularly blocking our crosswalks. How's it possible we have zero enforcement on the street currently?
Okay, I'll pass that on.
Please, thank you.
The area uh right in front of Old Place isn't particularly bad because the yellow. This is right at the light.
Right.
The yellow in front of the ice cream shop and Joey's shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you people don't really know. Totally blocks that intersection.
Um, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Other questions in comments? Okay, let's kind of go over to Chief Daly for the fire department.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Um, few updates. Uh, we have a we had a community member that donated uh four thousand four hundred ninety seven dollars to the Friends of Twin Lakes. And that's gonna be for um. Uh, let's see here. It's for either, you know, we can utilize those funds for Station Two or greater equipment for operations. So that's great. And I hope to get a total on what those donations have brought in since um the beginning of the Station Two project. That our community members have donated to the fire department and for greater operations. For next council. Uh, we were awarded a thousand dollar grant from Chiefy County. And uh, that's to support the peer support program. We have three personnel right now in training for that. And I want to thank Lori Ty for putting in for that uh grant and was awarded for that. So that's wonderful. That'll pay for at least. One of those courses and then we'll try to go for reimbursement, excuse me, for the. For the remaining or some of the other costs for through the heart, cancer, behavioral health um process. The Type Three Engine made the B M E Boise Mobile Equipment Fire Calendar. So it's on March uh of this year, so it's in the calendar. So I think that's pretty cool. That our piece of equipment made that calendar. And that's thanks to um Jen Rogowski. She is the uh manager. She. She uh managed our Facebook page and was able to take some of those pictures when we were out doing our Wildland uh field day. And uh it made the calendar. So that's great. The Type Six uh is coming to us a whole lot faster than I expected. It is gonna be done in two days. And yeah, wow. And then uh but it'll take uh up to two to three weeks to get some decals work done on it. So. We'll probably see it here in the next month. So that's uh that's wonderful news. Uh, my management board. Excuse me. My management board and I are working on, uh, we worked on two different intergovernment agreements, one with C M C. And uh the fire department and what those changes look like. And I'm gonna give you a better update on that one, probably next council, because I still need to meet with um Ben from the college to kind of finalize some things before. I don't want to miss misspeak on um on anything that might happen with that intergovernment agreement, but that's that's coming down. And then uh and then also the fire department, the city and county intergovernment agreement. We're starting to discuss the changes that the county requested during our last budget session. Uh. To like redo the intergovernment agreement and make those changes. So we're currently working on those and then that will come before council. And legal council before um, you know, for final uh review. And I'll try to get that to you before, of course, to to review it a few different times, just in case you have some changes as well. But that's what my management board and I are working on currently. So uh I also have some highlights for twenty twenty three and some twenty four that you'll probably see again in the retrospective. And I just wanted to be able to put these before you so you had an opportunity to take a look at those before um that comes with the city administrative. Um, and administrators uh report out on that. So. That ends my report unless I have any questions.
Questions for Chief Daly?
Like the exact opposite situation to purchase a vehicle that we had last year. Months and months delayed and.
So great.
Yeah.
And what's the calendar that type three again?
Uh, it's in the Boise Mobile Equipment B M E. It's the it's where it's the manufacturer that we got it from and made their calendar. Yeah.
So. Okay, other questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Human Resources.
Okay, so. I'm doing. Lot of continued onboarding for myself, so I've been meeting one on one with department directors to see. Uh, what kind of things they need that they um maybe haven't seen in an H R function here before. Uh, or what they just need more of um in terms of supporting retention, um, learning and development. Um, all that good stuff to just help them have a good, strong team. Uh, and things they need for themselves to be um leaders and managers, um, thinking of that. And then of course, just administrative assistance. Um, if it comes to um. Recruiting, I've noticed a lot of departments have posted and done their recruiting and offering and all that stuff. So uh I'm gonna bring that all into H R so that every I post everything, I monitor job posts. Make sure it's compliant with employment laws because they've been adding on every January first. Um, there's more rules that we have to follow. Uh, and then doing all the phone screening, um scheduling interviews, maybe, but um offer letters and stuff like that. Make sure that there's complete consistency uh across the entire city. Um, among the departments. Um. So we have. Five new hires, four technically this um just a couple of weeks ago with the resident reserve program with firefighters. Um, myself and no resignation or termination, which is great. Um, rather keep people coming in and not going out. Um, I am currently obtaining quotes, um, a campaign recruitment campaign for a chief of police. Uh, so there are companies out there that will make a fancy brochure and um mail it out to, um, they have a bunch of resources. Um, so we're trying to get quotes on what that would cost. Um. Whether we go that route or not is still up in the air again, depending on costs, but um just to have a much broader reach and really take. Um, you know, recruiting a chief of police as far as we can and get the best candidates we possibly can. And hopefully um get someone that can stay and increase sustainability. Um, and also been networking with a lot of our partners, um, workers compensation. Um, all of those, but also our workforce center. Um, so I did have a conversation with her to meet with her regularly. And just make sure that our dogs are consistently um posted or taken down, the work workforce center. Um, and just really try to reach out within the community more than um outreach outside of the community. Um, except when necessary. Um. We are thinking of ideas. Um, employee appreciation day is Fri- Friday, March first. So I just wanted that to kind of be, um, I talked to Simon's in about it today. I wanted it to be on the calendar and to do something for our employees. Um, so we will do it March first because um street department will be very busy preparing for a key drawing. So we'll probably do it the week after or um something like that, but we will be doing something for our employees for employee appreciation day. Um, and one other thing I worked on, um, was working with Pinnacle and Associates Insurance Group, which is our workers' compensation broker. On um getting back onto a safety program and really um helping it in. Enforce it and have some of a representative in each department that helps kind of be like the safety liaison, um, safety advocate. Um, and so part of this is our experience mod, um, is a measurement. Used to price workers' compensation, insurance premiums. Ours, um, I didn't put it in here. I think it's at one point eight three and one is average. So we're a little higher. Um, and it's really just a couple of um isolated incidents that were big that kind of got us to that. We don't have a consistent issue um or anything like that. Um, but it does help to have a safety program that just keeps it um in everyone's mind consistently. Especially after a couple of years complacent Z P D, um, definitely a factor when it comes to things like that. Um, otherwise, I'm new to these department reports and if you have a question, things you would like to see in them, um, please let me know.
Questions for Miss Beal?
I'm very excited that we have an H R report.
I was just looking at all your onboarding questions and I was like, this, this is why. We really need you.
I also needed to get a big bell and every time like someone who was working in Summit starts to work here.
Anything else? Great, thank you. All right, I'll ask animals out there for a turn in a little bit. Thank you, Caitlin.
Um, I will try and keep this very brief. This might have been one of my longer reports. Um, so to recap, just like um Kat Conley did in his report, we have some twenty twenty three statistics and visuals here. You will receive another visual and additional statistics in the retrospective. But here you can see it breaks down our intakes into sprays, what we call a hole that the state falls others. Surrenders and then transfers in. And then since holes and others is like a broad category, you can see down below that's broken mostly into law enforcement and when they're requested. We also have court, um, hole. We did have six puppies that were brought to the shelter and some were like, those are mine and they were stolen. We just had to hold on to them for a little bit. Um, as well as bike quarantines and then born in care. On the second page. From our statistics last year, you can see um the unpaid impound fees. Um, with the former staff, they don't work there anymore, so we don't foresee those impound fees being lost this year. Um. We do have some that the community could not afford the impound fee, so we're gonna give them their animal back if they came within, you know, one to two days to get their animal. So if they get the money, they can come back and pay it then. Community emergency help, that's gonna be like domestic violence situation, their house catches on fire, something's going on and they need our assistance for a few nights. Um, I have a few emails out to Heath to meet with him about the sheriff's department and um to include these fees. And then the court was just from um a bike quarantine where the owner did not appear in court, so we have not received those funds yet. Um statistically, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, I have orange is our overall pack the total. So in twenty twenty during COVID, we had a hundred and fifty-eight animals come through the doors in twenty twenty-one, two hundred and eighty. In twenty-two, two eighty-eight, and then of course in twenty-three, three oh one. And then I also throw those total intakes down into what we had from the city and what we had from the county. So the past two years, I was very pleasantly surprised and happy that overall in twenty twenty-three. We have a decrease in stray than animals coming into the shelter. Um and a decrease in unclaimed strays. But we can see that the past two years, the county has had more animals come into the shelter than the city has. And since um the shelter panels were mentioned last department report. Um I just wanted to bring to council's attention that since twenty fifteen, it has been a national standard to have a double compartment panel. So that the animal can have a um bathroom area overnight. We do leave that by midnight and get back at eight AM, so that's about fifteen hours, the dogs are left by themselves. The next picture unfortunately isn't what happens when we do have to have dogs back-to-back and they use the bathroom. So um that was a little boy's painting project and it took staff about thirty to forty-five minutes to clean that up.
Hmm yeah.
Um so based on that information this year in twenty twenty-four, our big goals are to increase own pet identification. So microchips, collars, harnesses and ID tags, um also have animal control onboard. Sometimes tickets, we have to call law enforcement if it's the animal's third time in. So we don't want people to get ticketed the first time their animal's brought in, because things can happen. But if they're repeat offenders and they're not taking those measures to prevent that from happening. Um would like to see tickets in order to make those owners to have some sort of accountability. And then for the car video, we'll be trained to national standard and certified in Colorado. As a certified animal control officer by mid-April, so we look forward to having her onboard. Uh we also wanna have community education, as well as add our educational posters in both English and Spanish. And then we plan to have some emails and mail reminders for people to get their animals licensed and about different events. We started the year off with four dogs, six puppies and no cats. None of the six puppies were the ones that were, the ownership was questionable, so we had a toll onto them for a few days. With thirty-two animals cared for in January, twenty impounds, thirteen of those were brought in by the public, so shout out to the public. We did have five surrenders, they were all cats and they've all since been adopted. And then um forty, our current interval count is forty-nine, I believe. Um so based on some numbers and some spreadsheet I put together. Our twenty twenty-four estimate is gonna be around three hundred and thirty-five animals. And tonight, um I was informed to be an email that we received a seven thousand five hundred dollar grant by Matty's Fund. Um this wasn't something that I quite for, it was given to us, they wanted to recognize the hard work that we're doing and the improvements we're making, so.
Questions? Let's talk a little bit about the relationship with our local nonprofit, Plan Pet Hood. And seems like we maybe we got a little crosswise there with the spay neuter clinics.
Yeah, I might defer to Lori on that.
Yeah, I think that the cities animal, the city and the animal shelter um have had a good relationship with Plan Pet Hood. As far as uh their support of the animal shelter, so they've provided financial support for the animal shelter for a number of years. Uh as you saw in the response letter that I drafted, you know, I, we think that having more opportunities to provide services to people in our community is a better thing. I, we don't see it as unnecessary competition. Um I'm gonna forward to you tonight, uh probably a letter, probably I'll forward you tonight. A letter we received from the Denver friend, Don Friends League emphasizing that animal shelters really have occupied this. Space of providing community services, it's not outside of the scope of expectations for an animal shelter. And so we want to continue to partner with PPL uh and their and their board. We just don't see it as a, it's something that it's competition, we think it's complementary.
Does, does there need to be more coordination just to make sure that the events aren't on top of each other or too close together?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that on top of each other has been an issue in the past, I don't think we've had events on the same date ever. I don't, I don't think we've ever had overlapping events.
I just wanna make sure we support our local nonprofits, I think Plan Pet Hood has been great for the community.
Yep, absolutely. Yep, and we agree, and they've, they've been a fantastic partner uh for the animal shelter. For example, uh this past year, I think it was that we needed a new washer and dryer for the animal shelter. And uh Planet Pet Hood stepped up to provide, I think, all of the funds for that. So we definitely have relied on them, they've been a fantastic partner for the animal shelter.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay.
Alrighty, just a short one, um for business licenses, I'm working on putting out reminders to um reminder letters. Uh for people who haven't paid for their licenses yet, it does include the twenty-dollar late fee. Um we might need some additional letters to go up for compliance on that. Um the Golden Rose liquor license was officially approved, um the transfers done, done between the land being and the new owner. Um I did receive a core request as far as marijuana goes, um regarding cultivation facilities in Leadville. Um and then finally for term rentals, um I will begin our renewal period on March fifteenth for those that already hold a license. And then on May first, third meeting licenses will open up to people on the waitlist. Um if we haven't reached our cap already, which could change depending on next coordinate with seven. And that's it for now.
Question? Thank you very much. Building Department, are you covering this?
There's not much to cover other than there's. It's all zeros.
I, I was wondering the city permit fee totals, how we ended up with sixty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-two in the bottom.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, I, I'll, I'll get some clarification on that, I'm assuming that there's uh a, an error in there. And that will be updated for next month, yeah.
Like wow, that's, there's a multiplication factor there, that's not clear on.
I'll tell you for one thing, there's, there's definitely not zero building activity occurring.
Okay, well then that's.
Oh, just a question on this, does this come from the county?
Yes.
Okay, but then they break out things that are in the city.
Yes.
But that's, it's managed by the county building department?
Yeah, this is basically just a snapshot from Excel spreadsheet that the, the county uh keeps on city permits.
Thank you, it's most included in our packet for questions like these, like where that number comes from. Um but then we go to our own planning department.
All right, so. Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh if you'd like to follow along with me, I'm on page fifty-eight of your packet. I'll just cover the highlights of uh my monthly update memo. Uh one thing that's not um in your, I know I just wanted to confirm with uh Mr. Levy when he was here today. But as I understand it, they're about to be on a contract on a um lot in the rail yard. So this would be block one, lot one, so it'd be the lot at the corner of Poplar Street and uh and Twelfth Street. And so I've been working with their design team on a potential hotel project. And we've had some meetings and they are committed to meeting the, the PUD requirements and the design standard requirements. Um that we have in place, um the only issue that they've identified so far with their hotel uh project design. Is it look, is looking on, uh right now they're over the height requirement is in the PUD. Um so we will be uh, we'll be working with staff, we'll be working with them um on how to resolve uh that issue. Um but we are excited to see um that this design team is committed to uh meeting the city's requirements as um best they can. And I think this could be a fantastic project to bring some um commercial beds to Leadville. That, that is a PUD does allow for hotel use um by right on that lot. Um so it was something to come in front of those city council first site plan, but in terms of the use, it's, it's authorized by the PUD. Um moving on to other pre-application meetings that I've had, uh one interesting one is uh they're working with the property owner of non. Uh sorry, the owner of Nanzana on the property that he owns on Elm Street. Uh and we've had some meetings with the county on a potential um public private partnership for a multi-unit community housing project there. Um that would require vacation of unused city rights of ways, so applied rights of way that are not streets. Um so um that's, you know, stay tuned for that, um is that design, kind of those conversations that they'll. Um we have a lot of people come to us for certificates of appropriateness uh through the historic preservation commission. And work sessions with the historic preservation commission, um so that, so that's great news that the code amendment that this council passed last summer. Uh that requires modifications to historic structures and additions to historic structures to um receive a certificate of appropriateness. Um so it shows us that that code amendment is working and we are um having applicants, um you know, voluntary listening to these applications. And come in front of the HPC, uh which ultimately end up with the city council decision, so. Um so that is great news, the, the HPC agendas are getting booked out through, through uh through April. Uh so um we'll be uh very busy, ultimately that will be on your agenda um later this spring. In terms of the Leadville seven annexation conversations, uh the most recent communication with the developer, the meetings I had. Um has been that the developer is communicating, they are not going to be able to provide the uh low-income housing tax credit. Um but they mentioned they're going to provide in their work session. And so I've communicated that a housing commitment, um you know, speaking uh as a staff. Well, is what staff would be recommending to council, um and said that, you know, another housing commitment um expected. So they're not going to provide it in a white tech, with a white tech project, um and they should be coming back with some other proposal. Um in order to have, to provide a uh formal housing commitment as part of the annexation agreement. Uh there's also been meetings regarding the, the lack of the platted right of way that they have in order to connect their project with uh East Twelfth Street. I'll move on to uh just a reminder that we have a work session scheduled on March twelfth. Uh so the city council and Fel-Crestine, which is the uh family-owned small uh company is proposing the six-unit development. Just to the east of the Family Dollar. Uh so that would be a special work session on March twelfth to discuss a development agreement for that hundred percent total housing project. Meaning housing project. Also a reminder that on March fifth, uh we'll have a variance application coming in front of the board adjustment. Uh which, as you're aware, that board adjustment will need to be convened um in advance or pointed, excuse me, in advance of that meeting. Moving on to code amendments, uh just to update that, uh we are actively working with the city attorney. Uh on both the short-term rental license ordinance that was mentioned earlier in this meeting, that we have, I believe, in your next agenda. And also the housing variety code amendments, uh we've been working on the um both those with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And just in terms of other interesting miscellaneous news, um as Laura mentioned, we receive referral applications. From Lake County uh Planning Department when an application that could affect properties within the city of Leadville. Um is formally submitted to Lake County, uh and it's my understanding that Lake County will be receiving, they have now already received. Um conditionally used permanent application for um the Titan AU gravel pit. Opera operations, this will essentially be trucked a, a operation south of Leadville. Um that will um bring trucking through Leadville and it's estimated, I believe, to be a minimum of fifty trucks per day.
Five zero?
To put that into comparison, the um, the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff wrote a, uh received a. Um a referral letter in around September of twenty twenty-two for the um, sorry, is it JJK Mill? The current JK Mill and Slag River operation, and I think that those, that truck uh quantity was for that referral application that the city did respond to. Was around ten trucks per day, so this will be, this is more, more volume. Um so we will receive a for- formal referral application, or sorry, referral request from that. And I will review that with Planning and Zoning Commission, um I can certainly uh put that into a city council packet. And the county has communicated, they'll be, they will be conducting a bypass feasibility study, so they'll be putting out RFP for that. And also uh potential impact fee, um RFP to, for the impact on county roads. Um due to um those, you know, trucking operations like that. Uh just an update that the portion of right-of-way on West Sixth Street, that's approximately between the high school and the intermediate school. Um that was approved um by city council um and ordinance to be vacated in two thousand nineteen. And deed into the adjacent property in exchange for construction of a public right-of-way. So there's a corner of right-of-way that's platted, there was platted between. Um basically between the intersection of the Mineral Belt and West Sixth Street. And it was just basically a triangle or unused portion of right-of-way, so that was vacated. So that became part of the um adjacent property, not property, they're just recently constructed a sidewalk, which was accepted by the streets department. Uh so Mayor Green did sign ordinance, I'm sorry, a deed last week. Um that was approved by the ordinance and attached in the exit that authorized that right-of-way vacation. Uh so you'll um notice uh there's a sidewalk there now, um basically between the two schools. In terms of trainings, um several historic preservation commissioners, um as well as staff. And um council member Thomas did attend the Saving Places Conference, that's the annual, basically the annual state historic preservation conference. I think it was a um fantastic conference, some, some attended virtually, some attended um in public, I'm sorry, in person. And uh there will be a lot of interesting takeaways, we'll be discussing um historic preservation commission from that conference. Uh would like to, uh just this will be the first time formally announced that um um former planning zoning commissioner Edwards. Um has resigned from planning zoning commissions, uh concerning this uh city council um member. And position, and we will be filling that position, uh we do have an advertisement in the paper right now. Um that council appointment will be s- uh scheduled for March fifth. Um so we have, we have a couple of candidates right now, maybe a few more, um but that is our appointment by the mayor. Um but then just wanna thank um commissioner, former commissioner Edwards for his service on planning zoning commission, extremely valuable, especially with the housing writing. And I think we had something like ten or twelve work sessions that you were very valuable, your participation was most appreciated. So thank you, thank you for all your work for managing the zoning commission. And lastly, um as the mayor mentioned earlier, um our historic preservation commission chair, um Marshall Bartnik has passed. And um they don't have much to say, just want to um um give the uh respect. And um note her, her, how much she was valued on the historic preservation commission, so much of work has been done. Um on that commission, she was certainly a huge part.
She's what got us started on this whole project and it just, I'm very emotional about it. And simply because she doesn't even know how much we actually got, to the point right before she passed away. So she was very instrumental in getting us started and saying, what are we waiting for? Let's just do our cultural surveys and resource surveys, then she was very instrumental. And helped us get to where we are today and we're not gonna lose momentum. So an ad will be going out in the next few weeks for another uh person for HPC, but we would like to give it some time.
Thank you. Other questions for planning director?
Um sorry if I missed this, but um. Towards uh projects uh uh you and I spoke about for the. Um for the, oh my God, why am I blanking on your name?
Senior?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Um thanks, um is there any update as to where we are in the process to get back to them?
No, no, no update, I think the, right, right now, we have a special work sessions scheduled with city council. Uh regarding a development agreement for a um, for a pr- a project for proposed development. As you, as you and I discussed, the quarantine and labor union um project is a bit different, because it doesn't involve necessarily immediate construction. And so we're still working with the city attorney on exactly what a draft ordinance might look like. They would, they would authorize development agreements, um so a development agreement just is essentially an agreement for the city council. Could, to waive a code requirement, a zoning code requirement in exchange for the property you're providing a public benefit that's not required by code. And so um short answer is no update, but I, after the works, work sessions coming up on the Fel-Crest project. Um if, if that conversation goes well. Um, if, if that conversation goes well, I'm optimistic that, um, that could open the door for, uh, to have those conversations about other projects.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye, Mayor. Charles.
Good evening. Um, thanks for having me here. And just some quick updates. We, um, myself as well as HR have been working with Chrisel to implement timekeeping, um, so we're really close. With that, we have everybody set up, so we will begin rolling that out in phases. Hopefully that will, um, cut some time on payroll. It right now takes three days, four days. Um, so we're hoping, we're excited for that. Um, your impact stuff went out. I did have a meeting recently with, um, tourism panel with also Thar. As well as, uh, you've got the city clerk to go over a short term, uh, run all the view and analysis and try to figure out like what's working, what's not working. Um, and how we can improve the process as far as, um. Late payers, um, reporting, um, you know, I'm still trying to get money with. Uh, I believe it's called GOV OS now, um, incidentally, but, um, so we'll continue to, you know, work on, on that. Um. I did run the reports for. The quarter four lobbying tax, um, and it's coming in right now. It, it was at fifty-nine thousand five thirty-five. Um. A hundred and fifty-one accounts reported for Q four, eight accounts reported for, uh, the prior quarters. Um, so I haven't had a chance to analyze anything, um, and go back in and see if we have other ones, but I will be. Working on getting that payment out for the county, uh, for the tourism panel. Um. It was down significantly from Q three, uh, but I did look at Q four twenty twenty-two and, and we're actually up. Um, and I'm speaking with also that is what, uh, was projected as well. So I think we're right on track there. Um. Financial updates, uh, highlights, general fund revenue for the month was three hundred and forty thousand six ninety-two. Uh, revenues were six hundred and twenty thousand five ninety-four. That includes, uh, those big contributions to the Tabor Outdoor House. And that was one forty, uh, Main Street program, I believe was sixty-five thousand, um, and then the contributions for the amen. Um. Prior revenue was five hundred and eighty-four thousand seven ninety-four. It does largely include, uh, twenty twenty-three revenues that were billed back to the. County, um, I, I had hoped to get that payment from them by the end of December. If requested it, it did not come until January. So, um, I'll be, uh, moving that money back to the correct period. Um, sales tax revenue was two hundred and sixty-four thousand seven forty-four is reported by the county. Um. And that was just received. Or that, yes, that was just received from the county. I'm going to see, sorry, scrolling too fast here. Um. Any other items I have right now are, I'll start prepping for the twenty-three audit, um, so working to catch up on bank reconciliations, um. Judaism process, but that is where we stand now. So I'll be diving into those a bit more, um. And can just continue to work for efficiency efficiencies within our ERP program, uh, potentially looking at demos. Um, to see if, if there's something that is more, um, beneficial and useful for, for the city. Um. I haven't had a chance to establish the P card policy. I did, however, uh, order purchasing cards or credit cards for staff. Um, city hall, we're sharing one key card, um, so it, it poses a problem with, with travel. If it doesn't have anyone on it, then you can't, you know, reserve a room or you can't, uh, rent a car. So, um, working towards that. Um, and those are all the highlights I have in my business finance at this time.
Questions on the finance department activity now? So just looking to our financials, we are super early in the year. Pretty much hard to say much about anything. Do you have? Um, but other questions about the financials? As they currently represented for us?
And if you do have questions you find later, feel free to call in and stop by.
Question about sales tax, but we'll get to that later.
Hmm, we'll. Get to that. That's all.
Oh, the very essence of that. Sorry, question about sales tax.
Uh, Laurie, you might know my question. We chatted about it earlier today. Do you have any clarity on?
I did not have time to get clarity. I had just mentioned it to our finance director right now. We just had a question because, uh, I looked back at my most recent emails from the county. Regarding sales tax and it looked like the most recent one that I received from Jessra was for January numbers. And it looked like that was for, let me see if I can.
Yeah, I'm still trying.
Uh, so it looks like, yeah, the most recent one again I received was January twenty twenty-four. And, uh. Labelled January twenty twenty-four sales tax and for the city, it was three hundred and one thousand six hundred and four dollars and twenty-three cents. So that's the case that actually put us above, uh, projected revenue by twenty-eight thousand dollars for January. If those are, if, if she's correct, if that's truly the January number.
So sales tax is something I've been trying to, um, understand the spreadsheet since I got here. Um, because that, that was part of my role at the county was reporting on the sales tax. And so when I go through all of the reports prior to, um, me coming on board, um. They're reported like two months behind. So the February that we were seeing. Although it was sent over as January, we have received it as February income from the treasure. And that's how it will be written on the check. And that's historically how it's been recorded, um, on the spreadsheet as well as in the system. Um, so didn't try to wrap my head around it because it just hasn't made sense. Um, on the county level. They receive, say, January. In January, they receive December because once the books are closed. So they even received it in December. However, those funds are not distributed to the city until the treasurer closes the books in January. So there's like this lag and that's why that number is.
I guess my only question then is when, uh, it, however, it ends up, I just want to make sure when we're looking at budgeting. And so there's that city council sales tax report.
Yes.
And all I wanted to find out is if we're budgeting for January. Uh, we're looking at a number that is actually sales tax in January and the sales tax that's actually collected in January ends up. In January on the report. So we can say, January sales tax was projected at this and it was actually received. At this other amount, which is higher or lower. So it's the sales tax for January, not when we received it. And I know that's what you're trying to piece together.
Right, because it did make sense to me because that's how it's been done. It's generally say is when reported is when we see is what twenty-two, twenty-three?
And I guess what I'm saying is it, it doesn't. If we budgeted it wrong and we're accounting for it wrong, then it matches up. But if we budgeted it for January, but we're actually, when we go to the spreadsheet, we're adding February's numbers, it's, it's off the map. Do you understand?
I can, I understand.
So we're, you just need to figure out, so when we're looking at this, the data that we're getting, so if Jesser sends the email said, that says it's three hundred and one thousand six hundred and four dollars. And she says that's January sales tax, does that mean that is the money that was collected in January?
That, that is correct.
Okay. So if we put that number in our spreadsheet on January and then going forward, use that number for budgeting purposes, we would be in good shape.
Yes, I think, I think so.
And that's the problem.
Part, part of this year is, is January's sales tax.
Is not due until today.
Right. So the number that we get in January reflects sales in two months earlier.
Sales tax still the twentieth of the following month.
So then the question is.
That's why everything is two months behind.
Mm-hmm. Right, but when we get the number from the county that says Janu-, I have an email right here, January twenty twenty-four sales tax. That doesn't make any sense to me if it was not the sales tax that was collected in January.
No.
Then that headers, that label is, is, then what month was this sales tax from? That's what we care about.
Two months earlier.
But no, we don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, we've answered this question multiple times.
We don't know that that is truly what she is doing. That's what we have been assuming that they have been, been doing. And I, I guess that's what I want, all I want to know is if I get an email that says X month sales tax. I want to know that it was the sales tax collected in that month, not just remitted, however many months later, the county decides they want to remit it.
I mean, it doesn't really matter as long as you're comparing a twelve-month cycle to a twelve-month cycle.
Um, it may or may not, because if, if we're saying we had a bump in August on, and we look at the chart, all of a sudden our sales tax goes up in August. And we're like, oh, well, that must be the races. And it's actually two months wrong, then.
This is from October.
Right.
But that's what I'm trying to say, that, that, I, I don't think that we should have to subtract two months from every time, look at the calendar. I guess, because.
January first, the business owner doesn't have to drop everything, remake the sale.
Saying that we need to, to have business owners remit it earlier, I would say.
The way it is.
I did, yeah, I think it depends if you're looking at budgeting or if you're, if you're looking at economic analysis, like where did this bump come from? That's economic analysis. That's a two-month shift. If you're dealing with budgeting, then you just, you have the money that you have on any particular month.
Right.
And that's what your budget is set.
But that's what I'm saying is this system has caused us confusion because our finance director does not know the numbers that have been put in the spreadsheet. Because if we get an email from the county that says January twenty twenty-four sales tax, we have to figure out which month that is actually from. And it's, because it's not from January. It's in the, with, what council member Hill is saying is it's physically impossible for those to be January numbers.
And what you don't see in the, the sales tax, uh, reports that we get from the county, we get the revenue period. So that is anything that has been collected and paid in January of twenty-four, but it's for December, November. It can be back. Some of the dates on it go back years. It's just, it's when we made it.
I understand.
Yeah.
Well, and that's okay. So occasionally we get an anomaly.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, what I'm trying to say is if we're looking at our spreadsheet and it says what month we've projected sales tax. What we actually received and truly thinks those should be the months that correspond to those numbers. Not I take that month and subtract two and that's actually the month. And, and just think that that's crazy.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a lot of doing it that way at all. Um, it's been skew the prior years.
Yep.
So how do we all want?
At some point, we gotta get on track though.
See it.
Yeah.
We, we can do it for sure.
I can personally say I would love to have a more accurate viewpoint from that. And I feel like what Lori is presenting is going to present this, even if it's delayed a couple of months, a more accurate viewpoint as to what the budget is, where, where that we're actually working with. Because my initial assumption that looking at this number was not, oh, I have to subtract two. It was, oh, we're down. The red flag for me. That means now I have to start thinking about, you know, how are we going to meet? Ends me, um, outside of the budget and where are we going to, the money we're going to go to general, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, I would like, even if this number was, we didn't get this number until March or January, that's okay. I would just like to work with the actuals. Uh, maybe once we get closer to November, we have to start budgeting, we can have a little bit more estimates. But, uh, it just, it would be helpful for me as a city council person to feel confident in the numbers that I'm seeing. Without having to remind myself that I have to do minus two for every month that I'm looking at.
Yeah, I, and I agree. And I tried, that's what I was trying to do initially.
Hmm.
But then twenty-three, like nothing matched up when I started doing analysis on what was going on. So, um. But yes, I mean, I, I agree. It just makes more sense, especially with budgeting. Because probably what's going to happen is. We're going to have to move money, accrue money in twenty-three. That was posted in twenty-four anyways, because we don't get those dollars until two, you know, two months after the fact.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Just the only other thing I'll point out is that we are. I've been down seven out of the last eight months. So that's a red flag.
Are you, going off of the last year's schedule of sales tax information?
June, July, August.
It isn't really.
Well, that was an anomaly from twenty twenty-two. We don't know where a lot of extra money came from, but nonetheless, we're down.
There was a piece of equipment that was purchased within the city of Ludville.
So it was June, July, August, September, October, we were up, the only month we were up out of the last eight. Regardless of what month those numbers actually represent, doesn't matter. And if we're two months behind, that October bump is actually our August bump, which is pretty traditional bump.
Yeah, it looks like I'm at looking and I get, like I said, so it's hard to now and we don't know if we're comparing apples to apples. We think we are, but July and August were up. September was up, October was down, November, December down.
So really twenty twenty-two was the anomalous year.
Well, like.
Where we're up across the board.
Yes, but then we, we, we budgeted a little bit more in twenty twenty-three, so.
Is it fair to say that we are plateauing rather than turning down? Or, I mean, what would your analysis be of this?
Well, I think I would like to give them the.
Right. If you look, if you look at the totals, if you look at the sales tax survey report for twenty twenty-three across the board from twenty twenty. Twenty twenty was, let's just say, two point four million dollars. Twenty twenty-one was. Hmm, two point eight six four million, twenty twenty-two, three point, almost three point nine million. And then twenty twenty-three, three point seven million. So up, up, up. Down a bit, down two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, so.
But, but that June, um, it, it rose huge.
Oh, yeah, that did. You're right. And so then if you, yeah, good point. And then if you look at twenty twenty-three budget, we didn't even budget as much as we received last year. We budgeted three point four million for twenty twenty-four.
Hmm.
Or I'm sorry, no.
Twenty-three.
Right, yeah, twenty twenty-three and we received over that. So twenty twenty-four, we try and pull that up. So we don't always take into consideration like, oh, we got that last year, we're going to get more. Because we just don't know. So.
Okay. Yeah, this year. I mean, and it's early and it seems, I mean, with economics, it seems, you know, logical, gas prices getting higher and, you know, all that takes, you have to take into account if people are not visiting. Other questions or commentary on our sales tax? Okay, next meeting, bringing your dice, and we'll start casting lots, I'm not sure this will go. Let's pay some bills. So let's approve the bills that have already been paid. Thank you, Crystal. Questions on the bills? Holy cow, our utilities are expensive.
Insurance is expensive.
Insurance is so expensive, everything's expensive. The nine one one is expensive.
Um, I mean, both the bills, and this is a little bit off topic, but uh Lori, maybe we can convene at some point to talk about some potential uh partnership opportunities and grant opportunities for energy efficiency for this building, because thousands is a lot, I mean.
Absolutely, I think. Yeah, I mean, we have single pane old uh wood windows. And not that I want to replace things to our character of them, but they, it it is not as heat efficient as it could be.
When the boiler goes down, it's very cold. Still a little strong, okay. But there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
One of the moves to pay those.
Five seconds.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah.
Any opposed? Cause it's too late, I already said. All in favor, um, is, would that be, does anyone need a brief break before we take some actions? I just want to plow through this.
She's a great.
Okay, five minute break. Okay, let's get. So on our action items, uh, the first thing is is really just kind of a procedural thing. We were going to have a certificate of appropriate minutes for a decision, which is not yet ready for prime time. HPC has continued their consideration of it, so there's nothing for us to review. So what we need to do is make a movement to continue uh to a certain of our March fifth meeting.
Edwards moves to continue the one oh nine Oak Street uh issue to our March fifth meeting. One of the certains.
Do I do a roll call on this, or is this just an okay I?
Oh, I would uh request a uh roll call, yeah.
All right, yeah, can we have a roll call, please?
All right, Patwa Rivera?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Phil?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
And Councilmember Lael?
Yes.
All right, next up, uh, we need to appoint five of members of this body to the Redville Board of Adjustment. Um, last time we talked about this, uh, we thought that this was a mayoral appointment, it turns out it's a city council appointment. So we just, you know, nominate yourself up and and then we'll go through the uh proposed motion, there's a blank, a resolution with five void spots in there, and we'll just write in the names. Um, I will say that shortly after the last meeting, Health Member Thomas expressed interest in uh being on the Board of Adjustment, so I would like to nominate Rebecca Thomas by volunteer adjustment.
I can nominate myself.
One consideration that I would that I would consider is if there is a variance request that has been through the HPC, does your role on that complicate being on the variance approval?
Mister.
The HPC is not a recommending body to city council, um, but it's not necessarily just a direct conflict of interest, just perception conflict, and it's not even conflict of interest, but just um predetermined, yeah, um, your predetermined position on on application, so as a matter of perception, it might be better, I don't know that there's any code conflict, um, I have a consultant on the city attorney on this.
It's about.
Depends how how much you take optics.
Yeah, I will say that variance application is fairly rare, I think it's the most you're going to see once a year. Uh, I'm I'm not encouraging people to apply for variances.
Yeah, because I would also, you know, my thought also was your your background makes, it is pretty valuable to have in some of those considerations.
I will, I will leave that up to you guys. I I feel like it's the situation where to come up accusing yourself might not, I mean, obviously we're left at a core, but we really need to, I think we can, you know, um, go down that rabbit hole once we're here, but we'll have to add your expertise as well. Um, at least as a personal level, so I would nominate, if you haven't already, to yourself.
All right, so there's only five openings. Which means two of us just get to sit back and like play video games or phones while you guys consider a variance, but but they are pretty interesting, I would encourage people to.
I mean, we should actually hear from the people that definitely don't want to.
Are there people who definitely don't want to? All right, let's just go down the road, Tim, are you interested in being on the Board of Adjustment?
Sure.
Tim, all right, good, both Tim.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I know Rebecca Ed, yeah, let's go.
I'm open to it, but not eager to either, so.
I would like to.
Okay.
It's fine.
That's fine. So that would mean Councilmember Edwards, Councilmember Luna Leal, Councilmember Best, Councilmember Thomas, and Councilmember Hill. Are the five of you comfortable being appointed to this board? Is that?
Yes.
Anybody against it?
Uh, Mayor, do you mind, I was telling me again, which council members?
Councilmember Edwards, Councilmember Luna Leal, Councilmember Best, Councilmember Thomas, and Councilmember Hill. Beth, do you have any other uh considerations? This is a four year appointment, which means that if anybody rolls off uh after a two year Jeff will just fill in the blank spot, he's somebody else.
That's right, that's the chair. Yeah, so we also have to, like, chair, so there there's a chair appointment, but I don't know if that needs to happen tonight or another time.
Why don't we do that as a matter before they uh, once they convene, their next meeting, they can convene an uh elective chair from amongst themselves.
Yeah. Nothing further than that.
Questions or discussion? We'll entertain a motion.
Councilman Tharpe moves to approve Resolution Number thirteen, series of twenty twenty four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redville, appointing members of the City of Redville Board of Adjustment, do I need to name?
You do not, they're just fill in the blank on the resolution.
Okay.
Have a second?
I'm sorry.
Roll call, please.
Okay, uh, this is my first time with this, so uh, Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Pretend Tharp?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously.
Next we have a new important, we still don't really have any motion verbiage, but I think, you know, held it, Lori. This is a resolution for our supplemental budget, um, Crystal, can you flesh this out a little bit for us? Um, sure, I uh reviewed the twenty three actuals and determined where we might need um supplemental budget increase for those items. Um, under the general fund, uh, there were three areas where expenditure exceeded budget. Um, one was in City Hall operating, um, this was primarily for the purchase of the community center. So the increase to that budget is nine, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, planning, operating expenditures um were in excess uh primarily due to salary, salary and branch increases, um, as well as the speed pressure, operating expenditures um were also slightly over budget, um, also for salary and branch increases. I can't speak too much on what happened last year, I can just look at the numbers and see what transpired. Um, and then we also had a supplemental budget increase for fire. Um, and those items were for the wildfire operating expenditures of two hundred thousand, um, fire capital and training expenditures of fifty five thousand. Um, and then we increased revenue as well. Um, historically, those items are not budgeted for, um, because we do not know uh, if fire is going to go out and that those appointments go to wildfire and what the revenue will bring in to offset those expenses. Um, so basically, I just went through historical documents to try to piece it all together. And that's what I wanted. Any questions about our supplemental budget?
And I'm happy to answer any questions uh about our supplemental budget and any anything, because I know our finance director came in at the end of the year, and so if there's anything, any questions, I'm happy to try and field.
Yeah, question. Oh. So just to make sure I understand correctly, so in twenty twenty three, the City Hall operating expenditures was nine hundred thousand dollars more than budgeted, or?
Not operating, so it's the the money to purchase the community center came out of the City Hall budget, but it's not operating, it's capital. So the cost of purchasing the community center is a capital purchase, not operating, and it came out of the City Hall budget.
Okay.
So that's why, that's, you know, this eight hundred and fifty thousand.
And so is this saying that for twenty twenty four, we are increasing the City Hall operating expenditure by nine hundred thousand?
No, um, so we'll do a budget adjustment for twenty three to include that, so it's just an adjustment on the line item for the twenty twenty three budget. Um, so that the expenditures are not over budget.
So this is modifying the bookkeeping of twenty twenty three?
Just the budget, not the bookkeeping.
Just the budget.
Just the budget.
So in order to, uh, we file our budget every year with the Department of Legislative Affairs to state. And at the end, at, you know, essentially, when when you're closing out your books for that year, they want to know, did you come in within your budget? And so if you, if you exceed your budget, what you have to do is file a supplemental budget, which is what you're approving with the Department of Legislative Affairs, so that you can explain uh, where you went over, and so that's it, we we don't, it won't, it's not going, it's not money allocated towards twenty twenty four, it's just explaining if we went over in twenty twenty three, why.
They take this very.
Because you have to balance, they they they, DOLA needs you to have balanced your budget. So if we exceed it, we have to file a supplemental.
Okay.
And some, you know, it it, the county, as as Ms. Yul can explain, they 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 did it a little bit differently. They expected something to exceed the budget, they'd file a supplemental, you know, at that time. We historically have just done a supplemental at the end of every year, or as we're closing out books for the prior year.
And the county does the same, there was one year that we did it early uh in the year, um, because I had COVID during budget season. Um, so there were items that weren't included in the budget that we had to do a supplemental.
Oh, gotcha.
Earlier than year.
Gotcha, okay, earlier than the year, you can do a supplemental as as you go.
Some, some counties and municipalities do them monthly. So it I I don't feel it's necessary to do it monthly, you know, assess, I mean, at the end of the year, um, it's usually explainable. It just, it's formality to have a resolution, an adoption, um, and once it's all signed and um, legal recorded, then I will upload it to the DOLA portal under our supplemental budget. Other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion.
As it moves to approve the supplemental budget.
So you'll go, you basically read everything in bold.
Yeah. Uh, invisible.
Yeah.
That moves to approve Resolution fourteen, series of twenty twenty four, a resolution for supplemental budget for unanticipated revenues and appropriated additional sums of money to defray unanticipated expenditures and the excessive amounts budgeted for the general fund and the Fire Operations Fund of the City of Lakeview, Colorado.
Allois, say please.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Leal?
Yes.
Councilmember Best?
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes.
Councilmember Tharp?
Yes.
Mayor Green?
Yeah. Excellent, thank you for all the extra work, Ms. Yul. Especially coming right, and after all that money and arguments, so. Okay, now we're gonna move on to a a a a little twin resolutions, so to speak, uh, regarding our relationship with the Tabor Opera House and moving forward with some of the fantastic work that's being done there.
And I was just gonna say on this, I uh, we we do have the executive director of the Tabor Opera House Foundation here to present, but I just wanted to say, you know, the Tabor Opera House is near and dear to the city's heart, we would love to see uh, you know, the renovations continue, I did something fancy on this, I included two resolutions on one staff report. Uh, so if you want to pass one resolution and then not the other, that's an option to you. I just put them in the same staff report because they really relate to the same subject, you can consider them separately or together, I think, obviously, I mean, we want to see you pass both of them, and we would need a vote on both of them, but you do, even though they're in the same staff report, if you wanted to pass one and not the other, that is an option. So so everybody understands that.
But we can read the proposed motion for both of them and do a single vote for both of them, because that's the way the proposed motion reads.
Yep.
Okay.
But if there was, what I was trying to say, if there's consternation about something, you could break them apart.
Okay. Well, Miss Day, if you wouldn't mind giving us a rundown on what this entails for phase three?
Yeah, thank you, Speaker Council, appreciate your time this evening. Um, very excited, we were able to complete fundraising for the exterior of the building last year, which was fantastic, and a lot of you supported that effort in getting the messaging out, seven one thousand. Seven one thousand dollars of individual donations were matched and we were able to put that in cash dollars as well as money from the Department of Local Affairs, which is a grant you all received on our behalf as that public credit partnership. Our state historic fund grant that the foundation received, and then our historic tax credits that were just reserved and completed from the recent summer project that completed actually officially January seventh of this year with an install of heat sensors. All of that money is now rolling into our summer phase of construction for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And that will complete the exterior facade of your building. And that will include the windows of the front of the building, the balcony, and the upper cornice pieces. And all said and done, that piece of the project is about, well, one million two hundred thousand dollars. So really exciting. We were able to launder all of those wonderful dollars for our benefit and your building. And so the resolutions tonight get that ball rolling. We need the project manager, which is the architect's Chris Haynes, who's been with the project since the late nineties and has continued to shepherd this project on our behalf, ensuring that she parrots all of the contractors. Uh, we need this resolution to pass her as project manager, so she can officially create the set of construction documents that will be included in a bid package. That will be a future step for City Council in the next coming weeks that we will need to host and solicit. And then hopefully Council will then award that contract in April of this coming year, so that the project can start in May. So this gets the ball rolling. And then the second, uh, resolution that's included is just continuing that partnership with the foundation to do your grant administration. I do want to fly, I have been the, uh, executive director for the last two years, going into my third season with the Tabor. Recently submitted my letter of resignation as I'm moving out of state at the end of May. And so that has been drafted in such a way that it can be up to the foundation board of directors to determine who to carry on. Although I have, um, submitted my interest to continue working as a contractor with the foundation, which I helped with a lot of these balls, particularly these grants. That will be a future step for the foundation board to consider, but is something that they have already started to discuss. And then finally, uh, we have already started, uh, soliciting for the position of the executive director, an ambitious one, but we are planning to get things in place so that the even transition period will be done with as much grace as possible. So, uh, with all of that, fun and worry-ness, happy to answer any questions that the council may have with the two resolutions before you tonight.
And my understanding is these are relatively similar to prior resolutions for phase one and phase two, the KPI architect. Chris Haynes same, and then we've done this similar kind of, um, uh, agreement for professional services with them.
That's right. So this is our third iteration of this, the first being started in twenty twenty when the first initial exterior rehabilitation started. And so this kind of closes out this next chapter. And then simultaneously the board will then be working on the capital campaign for future phases. So that's a longer haul, but this is gonna kind of put a, um, a closure, if you will, uh, with this summer's work that will probably extend into twenty-five, but fully abundant. So yes, it is exactly the same as the last two phases on the exterior of the building.
Were these, um, were these planned for in budgeted expenses or are these new expenses we're considering?
They are budgeted in that group of funding that I spoke to at the beginning. So there's part DOLA funding that funds it, there's part state historic fund that funds it, and then there's part the individual contributions we received last year that funds it, and part historic tax credit that funds it. So over the overhaul, the four funding buckets, it's completely funded and it's incorporated in that one million two hundred thousand dollars.
So this is not coming from the city general fund or?
It will not accept. The DOLA grant is a reimbursable grant. And so through the summer project season, we work closely with the finance department at the city to keep the foundation cash flow positive. And then we remit those, um, commissions to DOLA and then the city gets reimbursed for those funds. However, uh, we don't expect first bits of money to really be billed to the city until July, because activity on the construction we start shall late May, early June, they'll get our first bill in July, et cetera. And we try to go down the line and get to state historic fund grants and kind of parse it out. So it's not all one entity or one bucket, if that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
There should be no net effect. Other questions? All right, I would entertain a motion. It's a long one. Take a big breath.
Edwards moves to approve resolution number fifteen, series number, series of twenty twenty-four, resolution approving an agreement for professional services with home architects, B.C. For bidding and construction administration services for phase three of the Tabor Opera House rehabilitation of exterior envelope project. And resolution number sixteen, series of twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving a payment management agreement with the Tabor Opera House Preservation Foundation for phase three of the Tabor Opera House rehabilitation of exterior envelope project.
I'll go seconds.
Sorry, was that Councilman Thomas seconded?
It was.
Okay.
We'll call please.
All right, and these are, just for clarification, these are for both, uh, both resolutions, all right. Uh, council member Edwards.
Yes.
Council member Hill.
Yes.
Council member Luna Liao.
Yes.
Council member Best.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Thurman.
Yeah.
Mayor Green.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate that. I did want to leave the job in action for both the executive director and a seasonal operation manager. And we will be open for key drawing for free drinks and warming station. And I'm not sure if you had a chance to say. Okay, Chris, thank you for your help.
Oh, Miss Day, I think you left your.
Oh, my, my, I already got papers. I didn't even. I never mailed this. All right.
All right, wow. So here we are, near the end of our meeting, uh, I would entertain public comments.
Okay, it's half nine. Um, well, the, for the presentation about the, uh, how the, uh, think taxable tax income is really exciting to me. Um, I, Mr. Hill contributed quite a bit to my understanding on this. So, um, basically there's several variables that could happen that offset this number. Uh, one, it doesn't have to be submitted until the twentieth of the following month, your tax payments. Two, um, there's late payments that are made. Three, as well, there, when the city issues, when the county issues that check, that's another variable. Um, and I just can't think of the fourth one right now, but, um, I understand the tax, and we're almost at a minute, the tax, uh, submitals of each, uh, entity is privileged information. So the county gets that from each person or each business. And then somehow the city gets a lump statement of that once a month. Well, why can't the county, so I can understand the difficulty of trying to juggle this, but it would be really nice to have an accurate or somewhat accurate, um, figuring of what these amounts are for a month. So is there a way that the county could submit a supplemental report to one person that would be the finance person here, and she would have that, that would be privileged information? City council members and, and nobody else could ask her who those entities were. I mean, what they individually contributed. Now we're almost at two minutes. But that way she could parse out, you couldn't do that?
No.
Why not?
The state allows one person and one person only to know who the payers are, um, and it's punishable.
So then couldn't, couldn't the county parse that out then for you?
No, all they can send is, um, the, it is broken out, um, by the, I can't think of the name of the number now, but everything within a certain number is all city and then all other numbers are county.
Yeah, so could, could they, 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 but couldn't that one person maintain this data on their own and then inform you, this is what was actually, uh, the tax income actually for January? And then when the late money comes in, uh, also submit another report saying, well, you know, this was late, so you need to adjust your January totals for this.
Exactly, very published information. Yeah, I have the local center training to even read that doesn't mean a person. It, yeah, there, the state is very, uh, strict on what.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying to break that. But the public, this.
Yeah, no, I, no, I, I get it. I do get it, but. Other public comments? Yes.
Good evening, good evening, excuse me. Um, my name is Samuel. I am owner here locally of the B and B Shipping. Lab council meeting. I heard Lori speak about, uh, fingerprinting, how the local police department is struggling with that. Um, obviously our sheriff's office is struggling with that as well. Um, they can do it, right? Police departments and sheriff's offices are allowed to do fingerprinting. There's only two people that are allowed to, um, do third party fingerprinting. B and B Shipping is one of them. Um, we worked with all of our fingerprinting about a year ago and got, uh, the only license to be a mobile in the state of Colorado. Um, so I am the only mobile certified mobile one, but realistically, the reason why we have it is because I thought it was ridiculous. Our teachers had to drive our pill. Um, I've worked with some council members here, are taking their fingerprints. Um, so I know some of you are aware of that, but for the meantime, we are here to solve the police department's problems. We only do, uh, not problems with the police, sorry, not problems, uh, with fingerprinting, uh, right? And so we're here for that. We do professionals only. We do not do anything criminal. It's only your teachers, your doctors, your attorneys, your every two hundred reasons why you need to be fingerprinted in the state. And that list is only corrupting, by the way. Um, so we are here to help you on that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Do you mind leaving us a business card or two? Because I, I think right now, uh, we would love to send people your way.
Sure.
If they come here.
Um, yes, so mine's all digital. I thought that digital business card, I just, I can always send you like an email or something like that.
That would be great.
Um, so yeah, that, that's, uh, basically what we're here for. And, you know, realistically with the sheriff's office, you know, you kind of wonder why, like, maybe a steer or parking ticket's not issued and stuff like that. They're fingerprinting somebody. They don't have time. You see what I'm saying? So if we can alleviate some stress of them fingerprinting somebody and send it to the police department, that can even more for them to go take care of things that aren't fingerprintable.
Great. Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for having me in the jury.
Thank you.
You need my email?
I do, actually. I didn't know if it was appropriate for me to walk out.
Okay, uh, just if you don't mind, uh.
I'll hang up.
Okay.
I'm lawyers.
Any other public comment from those on the web? All right then. Let's move on to Mayor's report. I really don't have a whole lot to say, uh, except I am conducting my fourth and final interview with a, uh, city decline group this week, and then city administrator, and I will meet about it. So I hope to come to you soon with, um, kind of where we're gonna go with that, some information, but it's all up in the air. I also want to thank all of you who, uh, went the extra mile to get all your signatory stuff done for the city. Thank you. Uh, that should be all, all just about ready to go by the end of the week. Is that it? Council reports.
I've got a couple. Uh, I attended my first EDC meeting last week as a board member and look forward to my role on that. Uh, they will be there, they've organized themselves, so they're really going to take direction from the steering committee. And our city administrator will be a member on the steering committee, as will the county administrator, the mountain college, the hospital, school district. I'm sure I'm missing one or two. Uh, and the, uh, the first steering committee meeting is this Thursday, the twenty-second, I believe. And one thing I'd like the steering committee to take up at their first meeting is, uh, at least some discussion around the pool and potential rec center. Uh, I was a little bit surprised when P V Swims came to our city council meeting about a month ago and indicated that they were gonna move forward with a tax ballot measure to pay for the pool. And meanwhile, the county is moving forward with a feasibility study. I'm looking at options for the pool and rec center. And I would hate for us to get in a situation where both the governments are not working collaboratively with P V Swims, because they put a lot of time in effort into this. Ask for the steering committee meeting this Thursday. Uh, secondly, last week I had an opportunity to meet with Gail Langley. She's part of the Department of Local Affairs, and she's their main street coordinator. I first met her at the Saving Places Conference here two or three weeks ago. And I was interested in meeting with her in particular to ask her how Main Street's programs uh, coordinate or not with urban renewal authorities. And so she was able to explain to me that there are two other communities in the state of Colorado, Wellhanta and also Windsor. And Wellhanta has an urban renewal authority and Windsor has a downtown development authority. And they're both working very closely with their Main Streets boards. So I think that's something I'll bring up at our next Laura meeting, which I think is not until April, right? Because we just have one third one. Thank you. Uh, and then the last thing, I've done a little bit more work on this idea of getting a grant from the state historic fund to work on renovations for city hall. It turns out that a historic structural assessment was completed in twenty nineteen. I found a copy of that and, uh, shared it with city staff and the mayor. That work has been done. The critical elements that they identified in that report have largely to do with the roof of this building as well as drainage around the foundation. And I would like to request a meeting with city staff so that we can discuss potential next steps on actually applying for a rehabilitation grant from the state historic fund.
Yes, and I agree with you, and I, I want to find out when the most recent roof port was done. We should look into that, but absolutely the drainage around the building is key. Uh, I've asked Miss Ty to try and schedule a meeting for us.
Oh, good, okay.
On the list, Chris.
Thank you.
That is all. Other council reports? Thank you. All right, move on to the public meetings planner. Which I would say it's not on planner, but please remember we have a work session on the evening of the twelfth. Um, with Velcress. At six P M. We also do not have a Laura Ford meeting on March seventh. That just gets printed out every.
Is it April the next one?
Yes.
Which, which? Fourth, fourth, thank you.
We have a real public authority meeting tomorrow evening. I believe we're gonna try to have, try to have that college at the coast of the library. Jackie would want to move that.
Yeah, except I think book clubs meeting at the library.
And now the housing authority would like to have a work session in city council. Glad to do that sooner than later. Well, we have a work session on the twelfth. Well, we could better have one on the twenty-sixth as well. Of March.
It's time for a budget season.
Like to consider that.
Um, I don't see.
We do have a work session on March twelfth.
That, yes, that's the work session with, um, with your Christmas and best. That, yes, that's the work session with, um, with our Christmas and best. Does everybody think about that? The heck of a month. But it's also fair, excuse me, important.
I'm gonna have to call Linda if you call.
Yeah, I, I'll, I will need to be remote, actually, for both work sessions, so you know. Chat about that. All right.
I'll, uh, put that in the bookends, but.
Yeah, yeah, let's just kind of maybe put a little, little bump cap in there.
I have added that to our working list of upcoming agendas. Other than noticing it as a work session regarding the regional housing liberty. Is there any, anything else you'd like the agenda to specify and more, to make it more particular? Is it just a?
Well, I think we, we would have better clarity on that after.
Gotcha, okay. Just looking at. Thank you.
Anything else on the public meetings plan? Okay, well. Then. At eight fifty-seven. New journey.